I call this regular Senate Commission meeting on Monday, September the 12th, 2022, for order at 6:03 PM. May we please stand by the invocation provided by Vice Mayor Mervin, followed by the glad of the state to the meeting.
Let us pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus, God, we're coming for you today, God, to say thank you. Thank you, God, for this is today, God, that you have made, and we share our rechoirs and be glad in it. So today, God, we come together today, God, to discuss the business of our city. Father God, we ask you, oh God, today you would be with us, and you would direct this, oh God. You would give us clarity and understanding, God, for you said in all things, oh God, get understanding. So Father God, we give you name, the praise, the unending glory, God, that you would be with us today, and lead and guide us, look upon our commission today, God, and our citizens today. Bless us, I pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of nine states of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Bad.
Present.
Vice Mayor Mervin.
Present.
Commissioner Bowden.
Present.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Present.
Commissioner Perez.
Present.
City Manager.
Present.
City Attorney.
Here.
City Clerk, present.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Thank staff, thank commissioners, and especially thank our audience, whether you were here live, or via Facebook or social media. We thank you for attending our meeting and participating in it. At this time, we'll move along with our agenda as presented. First item on the agenda is the additions, elisions, and approval of the agenda items. City Manager, at this time, do we have any addition to the agenda?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. I would like to request that we add one item on the agenda, a report from our ARPA Chair, Linda Joseph, to give a brief update and report of the ARPA committee. Could I get a motion to second that?
Where do you want to put that at? Where do you want to put it at?
We need to approve the first, and see where we add it, probably to presentation, maybe somewhere near.
If we make a motion.
If we did that with the Centennial, you always try to give a chair an opportunity to give a report, and that's what we have.
I'll make a motion that we will add the ARPA Chair Committee, Linda Joseph, to the agenda.
So can I?
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin, and properly second by Commissioner Perez, to add the ARPA Chair, Linda Joseph, to our agenda. Call for questions?
You want to put that under new business, or you want to put it up here with the?
Motion where you want to add under, let's move it, we don't have, let's do it under, we have presentation down here, you can do it under presentation, or right under the, yeah, we'll do it right under presentation, that's following the public comments and other announcements. So it'd be on the E.
Oh, okay.
Any questions? Hearing none, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Perez.
Yes.
Mayor Bad.
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
And Commissioner Bowden.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you, Commissioner, this motion passed by unanimous vote. Okay. And we'll move to approve the agenda with the one additional add-on, if there is no objection.
Mayor Bad, make a motion that we will approve the agenda with the add-on of the ARPA Committee Chair.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin, and properly second by Commissioner Bowden, that we approve our agenda as presented, with the addition of an add-on, the ARPA Chair, Linda Joseph. Call for questions? Hearing none, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin.
Yes.
Mayor Bad.
Yes.
Commissioner Perez.
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden.
Yes.
And I'm sorry, I lost my place. Commissioner Gonzalez.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I lost my place.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you, Commissioner, this motion passed by unanimous vote. Now we'll move to our next item on the agenda, which will be public comments, public service announcement, presentation, proclamation, if any. At this time, City Clerk, do we have any public service or comments?
Yes, we have four public comment cards.
My question to the Commission is, I have noticed on the scoreboard that Ricky Jackson's name is on there, but Gary Brandonberg's name is not on there, and I would like to know why? Because he had given the money to help to get that sign? And his name is supposed to be on there. Can anyone answer me that?
I'll try to answer that question. Ricky Jackson, several years ago, actually donated $5,000 for the scoreboard, the cost award to scoreboard, at a later date. Our former city attorney, Brandonberg, donated $1,000 towards that. I don't recall an official vote to add his name, I think it was the city manager, interim city manager at that time, Mr. Thompson, who wanted to add his name to it, there was no obligation to add Mr. Brandonberg's name. And to be honest, well, I'm not even going to go into it in further detail, but that would be my explanation of the reason.
Well, it was said in a commission meeting that he, his name would be on the scoreboard because he was giving the money to help be able to get the rest of the money that was needed for that.
Again, to my knowledge, there wasn't an official vote by this commission to add his name on there, there was a decision.
Really, Keith?
I didn't, yes, I'm giving you the information, you can look at the minutes if you like, just research it, find that particular minute, and see if you notice the commission voting for that.
Well, fair enough. Well, it was, it was on there, but somebody had it removed. But nobody wants to say who was the one that had it removed.
Why was it removed? It was on there.
It was on there. Somebody requested it be removed.
Who requested it to be removed?
My answer to you is, it wasn't officially voted on, the individual gave $1,000, there was a lot of folks that give money for a purpose, to move forward without having their names or anything on there, but that's just my explanation.
I was at that meeting, and when he gave the money, he was the only one that gave money to help to get that scoreboard done.
He gave $1,000.
No matter what it is, he gave money to finish to be able to get that, the rest of the scoreboard done.
Right, I agree with that part of it.
And he asked that his name be on there, and it was agreed that it would be on there.
Agreed by who, and what was the vote?
The Commission.
What was the vote?
The Commission didn't vote.
What was the vote?
I don't remember the vote.
Was there a vote for Ricky Jackson?
There wasn't a vote.
Was there a vote for Ricky Jackson?
No, there wasn't a vote for Ricky Jackson.
Again, it was a decision of the city manager at that time to add his name on there.
Well, how did Ricky Jackson get his name on there?
We're talking about, she's talking about Brandonberg. Ricky Jackson gave $5,000.
Because you're saying, okay, look, we needed, first of all, he gave that money like five years ago, and nobody took it upon themselves to order the scoreboard.
It wasn't enough funds to finish it at that time.
Exactly, so he pulled out his check and he wrote it, okay? He completed it, it was ordered, he came in, it was put out. So why, why doing this? The man is already dead, so that's a disrespect.
Yes.
To his name, to his supporter, to his friend, and most of all, to his family. Why are we doing that? There's only two donors for that one scoreboard, for the scoreboard, okay? We're talking about the scoreboard. We weren't picking money for the athletic department, it was specifically for the scoreboard. My thing is, why are we going back and revisiting this? Why?
Let me ask you this, if one bowling gave over $5,000 for the football field for the bleachers out there, did we put his name on the scoreboard?
No.
That was a decision.
He gave it for the bleachers, not for the scoreboard.
That was a decision of the then, of the then city manager. Now, this commission as a whole want to vote on honoring Brandonberg in that way, that's the choice of this city commission, but I was trying to give her to the best of my feelings.
After it was ordered and paid, and it came, and it hung, now you're going to come to the commission and ask, do we want to honor the man under, under?
Yeah, because it wasn't voted, I'm telling you, it wasn't voted on.
Who requested?
Was it voted upon for Ricky Jackson? Was Ricky Jackson voted to, for the name to be up there? I just want to be fair. If you're going to do it for one, then you're going to do it for both.
Yes, it was voted.
It has to be, okay, where?
To my knowledge, it was voted on.
Okay, so to her knowledge, or our knowledge, be agreed.
She's either commission, give me the date and the vote that that occurred, and let me know who voted in favor of Brandonberg's name being placed on there.
We agreed upon it.
Okay, we're going to, I answered your question as best I could, we're going to move forward with the other additional comments.
I'll try to go back and look through the meetings and listen, but it was, and especially with all that Mr. Brandonberg did for this city over the years, and as much money as he.
That's your opinion, too?
No, it's not just my opinion, it's what he has done. I've been at all these meetings, we've missed very few meetings, but it's been.
Okay, we're going to move on, and we appreciate you coming, thank you.
Ms. Pearl Freeman.
Good evening. I am here because I have a concern about the pier. We have some bathrooms on the pier, been up there for five years and not used them. And also, there is no lights on the pier for people to fish, and you know they can't fish in the day because it's, it is too hot, they're burnt up out there trying to fish in the day. So those are my complaints.
And we certainly thank you for those complaints or your suggestion, Ms. Pearl, and I also have spoken with the city manager, especially concerned in the lighting, and I think that's something that's in the process of making sure that those lights get there, but also agree about the bathroom, they definitely need to be open for people that can use or need to use the restroom, and we'll certainly make sure that happens also.
Because it's really shameful, somebody trying to walk down the other end, and when they get there, they don't need to go coffee all this stuff.
Just that.
That was supposed to have been done with that $2.3 million that we got, ma'am. That was supposed to have been done with that $2.3 million. The last, the last grant that we got, that was supposed to have been done.
Supposed to have been.
Yeah, supposed to.
It ain't nothing happened, now?
Yeah, according to the paperwork, it was done.
It was done?
Yeah, according to the paperwork, they went to tell us, yes, ma'am.
I'd like to know where the paperwork went, because I'd let them know it ain't been done.
We're certainly going to take care of it.
That's one of the biggest issues.
And if, I don't know if the city men have a quick update on the lighting and the situation with the bathroom, so we can make sure it's addressed in a timely manner.
Upon receiving things from several commissioners, I have asked several companies to come out, and I'm waiting for the courts, so I can get it to the commissioners to get it fixed.
Okay, that's the lighting, what about the bathroom?
The lighting around the pier and parking lot, and then I'm tracing.
No, that's not why.
It was all superficial pictures, I already told Tallahassee, I don't know what it's going to take for somebody to come over here and do something about it.
Commissioner Perez, just to give our factual information.
Yes, I give out. Uh-huh, actual information, that's actual information.
You throw out information from the gills.
That is actual information, sir.
Bottom line, the city manager understands the complaint and the need to have those restroom open, and he would do everything he has in his power to make sure that happened as soon as possible, and that's our charge as a commission.
So we're going to use our ARPA money to pay for something that we were already supposed to do, and somebody did something with the money, because obviously it wasn't done, and the money's not there. So now we're going to use the ARPA money, or the tax money, for something that we shouldn't have done.
Commissioner Perez, I'm professional, I mean, when you have an opportunity to give your report and make any complaints that you have, but just to speak out and blur out, I'm not saying you're going to agree with everything that's happened or said or happened in the past, we continue to harp on the past, too, a lot, you know, for the year and a half that you've lived.
Because you can't move to the future unless you correct your past.
Okay. City Clerk, are there any additional comments called?
Yes. Luz Torres.
Good afternoon, good evening, I'm here, City Commissioners. I would like to pass this information out, this is a study done by Florida State University and other entities, and it's called "Impacts of Sugar Cane Fires on Air Quality and Public Health in South Florida."
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Luz Torres, and I reside at 354 Nonna Avenue. I wanted to come to the commission today with hopes that this elected body will promise the citizens of Fohokee that they will investigate the concerns of its residents of an issue that has been plaguing our communities for generations. I have most recently seen some important information, this study's being published in the Palm Beach Post and other reputable sources, that discuss the quality of our air in the Glades, and the current practices of the sugar companies that neighbor our communities. Are you aware that our neighboring sugar companies have ways on which they can harvest their sugar crop every season without emitting black ash into the air that you and I breathe? For about six months of the year, our communities experience what only the residents of the Glades have firsthand knowledge of, as black snow. And it is not because it's the only way big sugar can harvest their sugar, but because no one has required that the sugar companies do otherwise. I want to say that we can no longer look at our neighboring sugar companies as a hierarchy, that we, as members of this community in the Glades, cannot have open, truthful, and honest conversations with about the quality of our air. We should not be afraid to ask questions and inquire about the green harvesting opportunities that would allow them to run their successful businesses, while keeping in mind the health and well-being of those who live here. We live here and work here, and these sugar companies are right in our backyards. We raise our children here, and if the sugar companies must report to anyone about the quality of the air we are breathing, it should be us. Can this commission band together for its constituents to find a solution to this problem for the betterment of our communities, and not be afraid to say to the sugar companies, Houston, we have a problem? It's a conversation that we should have, and it should come from this elected body that we voted into office on behalf of every person in our community. Can this commission simply say yes to informing themselves of the issue of our air quality, and work with other entities to be informed, and share, and inform their communities? I pray you can, thank you.
Regina Bowlin, 366 South Barfield Highway, Fohokee. I'm here tonight because I wanted, I didn't realize that Linda was going to be here, but I'm glad she is, to speak about the ARPA committee. I was asked at the meeting the other day if the ARPA committee had come to a consensus of what we should spend the ARPA money on, and I personally was not aware that we haven't. We were asked to go and go home, figure out what we thought it should be spent on, bring it back, have another meeting, and everybody analyzed it, but that never happened. So just, I didn't know she was going to be here, otherwise I would have just given her this, but I believe that we should spend the money on, 50% of it should be on infrastructure, 10%, which would be $316,289, checks to work in families, because there are so many people that are working poor, and that means gas money, or maybe some extra money for food, checks to the elderly, anybody over 65, same percent, 10%, 316,000. My thought was if we build, take the 250,000 that we have for MLK, and add it another 316,289, 10% of the money, we could build a really big pavilion with a kitchen, and then we could rent it out to families to have events there, and that would pay for itself. And 20%, which is 722,352, if we were to loan the money to, say, a partner, maybe somebody like Habitat, to build the houses, then once the people got the mortgages, they could pay it back, and then we could go back and do it again. Start with five houses, five houses, five houses, pretty soon you'd have like 40 houses, and that would total $3,162,890. And that, I just wanted to get on record how I feel like the ARPA money should be spent, okay? Thank you.
Any additional comments called?
No, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. And next on the agenda, we'll have a presentation by our ARPA Committee Chair, Linda Joseph.
Good evening. Linda Joseph, 33 Seville Street, Fohokee. I thought it would be wise for me to come today to speak with you all, and give you the truth about what has been going on with the ARPA committee. On June 6th was our first.
and then we could rent it out to families to have events there, and that would pay for itself. And twenty percent, which is $722,352, if we were to loan the money to, say, a partner, maybe somebody like Habitat, to build the houses, then once the people got the mortgages, they could pay it back, and then we could go back and do it again. Start with five houses, five houses, five houses, pretty soon you'd have like forty houses, and that would total $3,162,890. And that, I just wanted to get on record how I feel like the ARPA money should be spent. Okay? Thank you.
Any additional comments cards?
No, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. And next on the agenda, we'll have a presentation by our ARPA Committee Chair, Linda Joseph.
Good evening. Linda Joseph, 330 Seville Street, Fahokee. I thought it would be wise for me to come today to speak with you all and give you the truth about what has been going on with the ARPA committee. On June sixth was our first meeting, and at that meeting, we were given an overview, and the overview was read to us, explaining the details of this ARPA money. On Ju-, I'm sorry, I said June sixth, but it was June ninth. Each one of us, there were eleven people that were elected to be on this board. There were eleven active people ready to go that particular day to get this going. And on June, after giving us the, our packet, everyone receiving a packet, the packet includes an overview and all of the rules that governs this money, which was a hundred and fifty-nine pages. I was told that, um, there's no way that nobody could read a hundred and fifty-nine pages to understand what it means, okay? I sat down and I read the hundred and fifty-nine pages. On the next meeting, which was on June, I have my order. June, the, the sixteenth, June the sixteenth, at that meeting, we were told, and we elected officers. I was elected, I was given a folder, and in that folder, it stated that I was the chairperson. And we all, the rest of the committee, had to decide on who the other officers would be. So the co-chair was Patricia Wallace, and the secretary was Sanqueta Williams. At that meeting, we were told to work in working groups, and, but nobody had a real understanding of what we were to do with this money, because we were just given an overview. So, at that meeting, I told everyone that I think Mr. Bolden was at that meeting, and I asked, I asked everybody, as a matter of fact, I wanna go back, at the ARPA meeting, I've only seen Sarah Perez, Mr. Bolden, and Mr. Baugh at the ARPA meetings. And I think we needed the support of our commissioners to carry out this board, and we got a little support, no input, nobody gave input. We were only directed by Ms. Boulay. And I, as a board, there was no reason, I think that we got off on the wrong foot, because at the very first meeting, Mr. Lucas came in with suggestions as to how we were to spend this money. I went off on the deep end, because first of all, I have, my time is very important. So after he presented his budget, I said to him, raised my hand, Mr. Lucas, what are we here for as a board? And I thought that as a board, we were to come together, and we all decipher the information that we were given, and we come up with decisions, and all of us decide, and we live in a democracy, and vote on how we should allocate this money and bring it back to the commissioners. That's what I thought, that's the way this board was supposed to operate. The next meeting, we do not have a forum. That meeting was held on June twenty-third. Everybody promised to be there, but everybody don't show up. Now why? I'm confused, because we have a job to do, and we were given a timeframe to do it in. We were told we had to have a decision by July twelfth. I interrate to the board that, look, we have until 2026 to spend this money. Portion of that money has already been allocated, which was half, $1.5 million. The other portion of the money was supposed to be, uh, requested here in March of this year, which would be the other $1.5 million. We got a total of $3.5 million, okay? So now, here we have $3.5 million sitting there, because I was advocating for the citizens of Fahokee. What I wanted to do, I wanted to see everybody get a portion of this money, not everybody, but homeowners and small businesses, if it would be adequate amount. So apparently some disagree with me, and we can't disagree to agree. There was no problem, I didn't have no problem with that. The next meeting on June thirtieth, here we don't have a forum again. Now, we're ready to move forward. What we were told before we left this June twenty-third meeting to go back, look at our information, bring back our, um, what we think, how we think we should use this money, and then we will all come together on June thirtieth and decide. We have several people who have not shown up, and it was told to me that if you miss two meetings, after two meetings, then we are to remove you from the board, so that we can continue to participate or get this thing going. But this is why there has been a delay. We've had certain people who have not, uh, shown up. I have not seen Ms. Mervin, who was the commissioner, Ms. Wallace, she showed up to one meeting, Ms. Wa-, uh, Williams, who was the secretary, showed up to one meeting, and it's just sad that here the officers can't come together, just like we were saying about our commissioners, we need to come together and work together as a team, and this is not happening. So I wanted to rectify the lies, because that's just what's been said here, that we were contacted. We have not been contacted since June thirtieth about a meeting, not one time. I am the chairperson, and if you had, if the office administration would have called me, I would've took upon myself and called each of the members of the board. I did take upon myself and call them and say, hey, did you look over your information? Are you ready to give your opinion about what and how we should use this money? And everybody that I spoke with was ready, but for some reason or another, no one has contacted me to get another meeting, start or keep this meeting going. So this is why this $1.5 million that the budget, finance budget director was talking about, well, not the director, the accountant that was talking about on Friday, that this money is sitting there. Now, another thing, there were, there are four categories for this monies to be allocated to. Those four categories are, and to give you a breakdown of those four categories, because I, I, Mr. Bolden can vouch for me saying that I do not want this to be said, that Linda Joseph said that this is how we should spend the monies. I, I, uh, clear this statement to them, please read for yourself, so that you can have a better understanding of what we are to do here. For some reason, after I stated that, and I'm advocating for the citizens of Fahokee, oh, this was, that was, and I went against Mr. Lucas, it was, oh, that was a big issue. So nobody, nobody came up with anything, or to come up with why we should have, oh, let me go back, Ms. Bo-, uh, Boulay, she brought, um, a video. Uh, we were doing a Zoom meeting at one of our meetings, and she had the League of Cities to, waiting to do this meeting, but because we did not have a forum again, the League of Cities was not able to explain to us, and that's what she had brought them here for, to explain to us how we should spend our money in our city. And I thought that was out of place as well. But the four categories are... First of all, the money was given for anybody who was impacted by the COVID in 2020, but you had to be impacted before March of 2020. So I wrote that down to them, okay? These are the four eligible categories. Replace lost public sector revenue. And it says using this fund to provide government services up to the amount of revenue lost due to the pandemic. Then, okay, that's a, that's a big one, because that's what all of us are thinking, that this is where the money is supposed to go. We're, as the city, we're supposed to take this monies and use this money for whatever the city has, which is already in their budget, which this budget, that suggested budget that Mr. Lucas gave us, he wants to do things on the marina, he wants to do things for the sheriff department, all of these things are all, that he listed, are already in our general funds. So there shouldn't be a need for these things, because this is where our funds are. There are, we already have these things funded, and if they're not, we need to be working on replacing these funds for the next fiscal year. The second thing, respond to the far-reaching public health and negative economic impacts of the pandemic by supporting the health of communities and helping households, small businesses, impact industries, nonprofits, and the public sector recover, recover from economic impact. That's number two. That's where I was looking mainly at, in that category. But number three, provide premium pay for essential workers, okay? I might, it's my understanding that $17,000 has already been utilized or allocated to the city employees up on this particular, uh, eligibility category, but I have a problem with that. I understand that the thousand dollars was taxed. The thousand dollars was not supposed to be taxed, because it was a gift, and it was supposed, they were supposed to receive the entire thousand dollars, and they only received a portion of it. How much they received, and it was based on their income, or the tax bracket that they fall in, that they, uh, took that monies from. So I'm suggesting that we need to give those people that monies back, because it's a gift. It was not a part of their income. The fourth thing is invest in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure, making necessary investments to improve access to clean drinking water, which GUAA does that for us. To support vital wastewater and stormwater drainage, this is one of the things that I thought we should work on with this money, by adding sidewalks in each of our community and making sure our storm drains were cleaned out and working properly. And, um, storm infrastructure, and to expand affordable access to broadband internet. So we have, our towers all over the city, that the city is not responsible for internet. They have other companies who have come in here, and we've allowed them to use our poles, our water towers, and all these different things to place their broadband infrastructure. Okay, so that was, that's something that we really don't need, but the way, when we first came, there was only two people, myself and Pastor Wallace, came back with suggestions, and we were told to put this in a graph form, and I was kind of confused about that. How am I gonna do something in a graph form if I don't itemize it? But I worked it out. I brought it back in a graph form, just as I was instructed to do. So all I'm saying here is that, um, these were the only four meetings that we've had, and it's sad, that was June thirtieth was our last meeting. Here is September twelfth, and we have not had a meeting, and I have not been contacted. I have not heard anything from anyone about this monies. And that's, you know, the holdup is not your board, because this is not a hard job. The holdup is your administration, that's who is holding this monies up. So now, I don't know what their goal as to why they're holding us up, to go on and do what we need to do, because our decision is not the final decision. The final decision is gonna rest on you all, but we're gonna make the, hopefully, the right suggestions, so that you all can feel what we feel and see what we see, you know, and think on the line that we're thinking. And so that's all I'm here to say. It is not your board, and I don't like being a part of something half-done. So that's why I'm here today, because I do not like hearing what I've been hearing, oh, when we gonna spend the ARPA money, oh, when we gonna spend the ARPA money? But you have not come to find out why the ARPA money, the committee, is not doing what they're supposed to do. And all you have to do, I'm always, as a phone call away, if you can't reach me on the phone, I'm at home, or I'm at my daycare. So I'm just here to let you all know that it's not the committee, and if you all have any questions, I'm here to ask, answer any questions that you need to know about the ARPA committee.
I have a question. Have you seen Ms. Bowlin's list?
I haven't, she just gave it to me.
Do you agree with it?
She just gave it to me.
She said she hasn't saw it.
I have, I have, I have to do that in detail. And that's not the way we would do it. We would take in place each of those items on the board, and however men say, I think we should put it here, however men say we should put it there, however men say we should put it here, then that's the way it would be, and then we would vote on it, and the majority will win. It's not gonna be what I want, Bolden want, Ms. Wallace want, it's not gonna be that. It's gonna be that we all decide, and what we're doing is trying to work for our communities. This is the first time that monies has been given for the citizens, not for the city. It's for the citizens, and it is not being, nobody is trying to make this happen, and I, and I'm just here to let, put it out there. This money was sent here for households and businesses, and there's nothing else you could get out of there, nothing else you can get out of there.
So is there a way in the next meeting that can be done, so we can move forward?
We have not been scheduled, a meeting has not been scheduled, and I mean, I don't know how much authority I have here as a chairperson, so that's why the holdup is here.
Who schedules the meeting?
If it was left up to me, we'd have been meeting every week like we had said.
Who does the schedu-
Originally planned.
Who does the scheduling?
Staff have worked primarily with the committee to schedule and kind of organize their meetings to a certain extent. At this time, we're gonna allow-
That's what I'm saying, that's why I'm here.
At this time, we're gonna allow our city manager and his staff, whoever want to respond, to give a response. I know part of the ARPA is built into our budget, so it's gonna be some discussion tonight about some of the aspects of that. I realize also that, for as I know, some of the areas, key areas, that the committee was hoping to be funded is part of the budget, those, uh, housing improvement and assistance to business and some other things, so the amount could fluctuate here or there, but I'll let our city manager and whoever he delegates to kind of respond, and we'll move on.
Thank you, Mayor. Our designated person is Ms. Boulay Washington, she's ready to come up and speak. Come on, Ms. Boulay.
Evening, Mayor, Commission, city manager, members of the public. So I wanted to provide some clarification to the statements that were made. They're misguided statements, there are some areas in the statements that were made that were misguided, so I would like to provide, provide some clarification to that. In fact, I have been in constant contact with the board leading up to the, I want to say the week, if I'm not mistaken, after the last meeting, and I have had in-person interactions with just about every member from the board in reference to us speaking with managers. in reference to us re- uh speaking with management and rescheduling the, the meetings and or yielding to whatever decision uh the manager makes along with Mayor Commission as to the fate of the board. I have informed all board members of that conversation. And I have also, I spoke with Ms. Joseph actually last week. I invited her to an event and I also shared that city management was working on what the outcome or the final decision as to whether the board was going to reconvene or and/or what the next steps were in reference to the ARPA board. Also, another point of clarification, with every meeting that we had, not only was the final rule provided to the ARPA board, which was a long document that was referenced, in addition to the overview, because it was a lengthy document, it was never stated that the document could not be read or that no one could read it and or even understand it. The overview was provided in addition to, for clarification sake, for members who wanted a summary, a summary of certain areas within uh the final rule. And als- also another point of clarification, all members have been encouraged to share their input either via email, via phone call, in-person visits, and/or during ARPA meetings. It has been quite the challenge, yes, to get everyone together. However, everyone has been in, I have been in contact with the members up until these last recent weeks. And I, and the last contact that I had with members was informing them that city management is uh currently trying to figure out whether they were going to continue having the meeting, holding the meeting, and/or going to commission with alternative steps. And that was due to, and it wasn't due to lack of participation, unfortunately. There were several members that had a couple of emergencies the last two meetings, which, which is the reason why uh we did not have quorum. So as I stated before um and during the workshop, if the, if it pleases the commission and city management, if you would like to reconvene and have the meeting so that members can share their input with everyone present, I am all for that. And we can just continue and, and move forward with it. But at no point in time was clarification not made for our ARPA members. Also, another point of clarification, the Florida League of Cities was, it was suggested that we bring in the Florida League of Cities to give the members an opportunity to ask them questions. Not to impose uh the city's will or anything of that nature onto uh the members. It was for clarification sake because the members had a few questions in reference to the um, the suggestions that were given to them by management. So management wanted the members to feel comfortable in their decisions. They didn't want them to feel rushed or influenced in any way. So bringing in the Florida League of Cities to provide clarification was the um, the reason why that happened and it was explained prior and during. It was also emailed to our members.
Ms. Boulay is making these statements and that's why I'm here, because I'm sick of it, these lies. Ms. Boulay stated that she called every member, what member? If I had not heard from anybody-
We spoke, Ms. Joseph.
You spoke with, Ms. Boulay spoke with me on August thirtieth.
Yes.
We had not had a meeting.
We spoke now.
You had not spoke with me before.
Yes, we did. We spoke.
Okay, well, okay. If I don't remember that, if you spoke. And if she sent you an email, you all need to ask her to produce those emails because I have not received-
Everyone is on a chain email.
I have not received my one email since June thirtieth.
And we spoke since-
And I, and I feel disrespected as a chairperson that she has not been in contact with me. She has the two people or three people that she only contact. Ms. Bowlen was at the meeting Friday and she was asked, did she submit her paper?
Ms. Bowlen was contacted, ma'am.
She is, she, she did not-
Ms. Bowlen was contacted and she stated that she had some issues with her phone. She was contacted and I emailed that I have a, I have a spreadsheet.
I have not received those emails.
I have provided that with you word for word, what she said.
Ms. Washington, at this time, what I wanted to do is just allow the city to respond. We heard from the chair, so we do have both interpretation. I know sometimes you have to get some clarification. If something was said that you totally disagree with, you wanna kind of put it on record, no, I don't go along with that statement because it's false or untrue. But in, in a generous sense, I just wanted to make sure that the commission and even our residents had an opportunity to hear from both, both sides. So we'll move forward, we'll make a decision on whether or not we want to encourage these meetings to continue a little longer so we can have the input that we really in the beginning requested to receive from our residents on behalf of the residents the committee is representing them. So we'll figure out a way that that input will be part of this process so we can make an informed decision as a commission.
And Mayor, I just to note, um in addition to emailing our, our members, our committee members, I give courtesy calls as well. And I give multiple cour- courtesy calls. I leave messages where, when I'm able to leave messages, if the voice messages are not full. Now, if there has been a gap with certain uh modes of communication in terms of the ARPA uh committee, and that's only because the city along with Mayor Commission had not made a final decision as to whether they're going to continue with the committee and/or um uh uh go with another alternative.
I think Commissioner- Commissioner Bowlen had to come in, I wanted to allow him to make his statement if we could move forward.
I just wanna know, can we, is it possible? Because it seems like the, you know, we have problems with consistency. So can we set a date where everyone can just agree to show up that one day? And we take care of all of this in one day? And then in the next regular scheduled commission meeting, the commission votes on it and we move forward. Can we do that?
Mayor, but I can um agree with that, but also listening to um Ms. Joseph and Ms. Boulay. Once we relinquish that uh charter to give it to, to get a committee, we, I, I stayed out of that because we say we want to give it to the committee. The committee had the lever. Then I didn't come to the meetings because we won't have any input in there anyway because we have to vote on the items that they bring forth. So I stayed away from that, from that practice because I'm waiting. My problem, I'm waiting on the committee and if, if the staff would know, I always say, okay, was there anything given yet to the committee? I even asked, did the committee submit any um, there is, y'all, all of them submit what they want so we can move on because we on a time limit with, with the monies. So we haven't gotten, but as far as the, as the commission affords me, had no, I didn't know we had to be, we wasn't the one had to call and ask was there a meeting because we relinquished that to the committee and to Ms. Boulay. Our point here was waiting on to get the, to get the final from the committee, from Ms. Boulay, that the committee have done, decided what they're gonna do. They submitted it to the city manager, this is what we're gonna do and move forward. That's the part I'm, I'm, I was waiting on. Now, as far as all of the other stuff, we had no dealings with the, why there was no meeting, who's supposed to come tight with the meeting? That's what's come between the chair and the um, the one over there, ARPA committee. So I didn't show up these meetings because we have to vote on what y'all, what you have to bring forth. So I didn't want to hear first hand, then I have to come back and vote on that, on, on that. So I stayed away from that.
And, and to provide also some input on that, in, in addition to that last meeting being unsuccessful to, due to several members having emergencies, we also went back to the drawing board. I was asked to share the input that has been given to me thus far. And then management along with commission, Mayor Commission would come back with some form of, of a resolution. So, and that's what I did.
So can we-
Yes.
Set a date where it's a one-shot date, where the members get together, they do everything that you guys discussed, bring it before the commission, commission votes.
Yes. Yes, you can.
Yeah, we can agree. I, I think that's a, a good move to move forward with.
Thank you, Mayor, for recognizing. So the time-sensitive thing is if we don't meet before our next city commission meeting, the twenty-seventh, then we lose fiscal year twenty-two funding or that allocation uh uh moving forward. Or you guys wanna start on the twenty, um fiscal year twenty-three, that's fine.
We got until twenty-twenty-six to spend this money. We got twenty-twenty-four to, 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 to get the rest of that monies out of there. So we have, that makes us have a year and a half to get the, the one point five that's left out there. And give the reason, each month I think that they're supposed to send in something um to, to show how or what, where we are with this money. And so I don't know if that's being done or not, but a, a, a quarterly report or something that's both.
If I'm not mistaken, hasn't the other half been received?
Yes. The total, total allotment received is three million one hundred sixty-two thousand eight hundred and nine.
Which was the other point of clarification, it was not three point five, it was three point one.
So in this budget, upcoming budget, we're looking to spend half of that and then work on the next half in our second budget. That gonna mean we're gonna wait to the second budget to begin working on it. That can start immediately. But we need to decide how we're gonna set the date. And then we need to cut off a deadline. If it's not accomplished, then we'll just go with whatever information we got from the committee as a whole and see if we can incorporate that, which I think we have tried and got most of that in there, just in numbers, that may be a lot different from what they presented. But how can we best go ahead and establish a date, whether we allow Ms. Washington to survey and call to try to get a date that the majority, if not all, can attend? Or just establish a date now and hope that all would be able to attend? If not, then we just have to move forward for this portion of the uh funding.
Mayor, we have decided and voted upon every Thursday. And at six o'clock, the committee voted on that.
Okay.
That we meet each Thursday of the week until we made the final decision.
So I was getting ready to say historically Thursdays was the best day.
Okay.
And yes, as a committee, we did vote on Thursdays at six P M. to be the available date. And we have Thursday, June, uh excuse me, uh September twenty-ninth. If that is, if that pleases the commission.
I wanna try to get it within the timeframe that allowed the budget process to be completed.
Thursday, the fifteenth?
Yes, that's, that's what I was saying.
Okay, so we can do Thursday, the fifteenth. Ms. Joseph, yes?
And you're moving forward regardless of who's there or not there?
Okay.
And make sure we just pass that on to all of the committed members. It's on record, is that our commission meeting, the date established, the time and the date so we can move forward.
I will make those calls tomorrow.
Right. And I just wanna just quickly give Mr. Joseph an opportunity. I didn't wanna cut you off, but I was trying to get this moving a little faster than what we was doing. You have a comment you wanted to make.
No, it was just that I would say that when I spoke with Mervin, Mr. Mervin, right, London hadn't been contacted, nobody had contacted her. And that she called the day, I think the day before the um-
The Black Business Month.
Black, Black History Day.
The Black Business Month.
And I think that she spoke with her that day and I don't think I had, we had no new one.
So pri- as I stated, so prior to us speaking then, the week, I wanna say it was either the week of or the week after the last unsuccessful meeting, I made courtesy calls uh to our members, either um, and if, if they did not get a call because I spoke to them in person and, you know, we went from there. Um at, at this point, I would love for us to just move forward. I think everybody um in our committee, their, their common goal is to do something great for their city and give back to their city. That's the goal. And I welcome the spirited discussions. I do not back down from it, as you all know, I welcome it. So I think us moving forward with this Thursday will get the ball rolling. And if there needs to be more meetings after that, then we'll just continue to schedule them until we get an end result.
Get a one-stop meeting.
If this is going to be the one-stop meeting, let's, let's get all of our stuff together and let's hammer it out and, and get this, the, the job done.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
I, I have a question. Okay, they're, they're gonna come up with, with the, their suggestions. Okay, so what about the rules, regulations and all that? Because, I mean, you're giving out money, so what are their requirements? What are the rules? What are they? I mean, how is this gonna happen and who's gonna do it?
So once it's designated, I'm sorry, shit.
What I suggested in our budget workshop on Friday was that we consult with a consultant to make sure that we're following uh the guidelines, even on social media, some of the suggestion of the use of the money. You know, folks have an opportunity to request anything, but that was one of the things, you know, is this illegal or legal? But we, we wanna get a, an expert who has some, a knowledge of this law that can guide us in saying, you know, no, that you cannot do the way you're trying to do it. So if we can incorporate that and the city manager did indicate that he would reach out and we do have an attorney ourselves in-house that would also be able to look at some of these things and make sure that we within our guidelines.
So draft language would be created and then we would have the consultant and/or the, the attorney, which in this case would probably, would most likely be our city attorney, let us know if we're in the right, going in the right direction, if there should be some changes in wording and/or if it can be done at all.
And the only reason I didn't mention our attorney, just put her out there in the forefront because I just wanted to kind of be a little separated, a little neutral that Lisa, from the public perspective, that you don't have that. Well, if she's doing it because the city wanna lean towards this direction or the other, so they wanna get her directly involved. But certainly, she would definitely be involved in looking over some of the things and make sure we're doing things properly. It's one that was previous to our city interim attorney that have had some a lot of knowledge and understanding of this process that on a contract that is not that expensive to us. I think it's about two hundred dollars an hour. So if you look at maybe five hours, you're talking about only a thousand dollars. And we have to pay, and most cities are looking at having or already have some type of legal consultant so they won't go into muddy waters where they may eventually have to repay some of these funds back if they not do it right.
Okay, the reason I asked was, I was wondering, since we're talking about meeting on Thursday, are we, uh, will we be able to get this person there on Thursday with us so that we can get this ball on the road? And we get this on the, on the road?
We can do that, but it may be kind of productive. We can do that, but it may be kind of productive because we're all gonna be having discussions and it might take some time for everybody to get their thoughts out. And I, it might just, my humble suggestion would be for us to get it all on one document and then have that person either come out or we share it with them. And then that way they can say, you guys are on the right track or you may need to go back to the drawing board with this area.
That's why I want to, to keep from doing that, having to go back, you know? If he was here or she was here on Thursday, then they could tell us, oh, this is the way this is supposed to be done. These are the rules, so this is what we can use it for. So, I thought that it would be best that that person sit here on Thursday if possible.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll reach out if that, if it pleases management. We can reach out and see if that person is available, um, for Thursday and then go from there. If it's not a person, are you open to that person being available via phone or Zoom or something? Okay.
If that, that person is knowledgeable, that's all we look for someone that's knowledgeable.
So, thank you. And thank you all for your input and my apologies if there's some miscommunication.
Thank you, Ms. Washington.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Have a good evening.
Okay, we're gonna move along with our agenda. We do have three certificate of appreciation, uh, that the city manager will be recognizing and someone on staff will be recognizing. We have two that, actually, th- two of them have actually moved on in a different position with a different city and one is expected to, uh, be leaving the city of Pahokee, uh, really soon. So, Mr. Lucas, if you would, I don't know how you want to proceed in acknowledging these three individuals.
Well, uh, thank you, sir. I know that one, um, in particular Commissioner Gonzalez had recommended Mike Pickney, so I wanted to recognize, uh, his efforts. And staff wanted to recognize the other two. So, I can, uh, announce them, see if they're here to come forward to receive their certification. So, with that said, Mr. Pickney?
Uh, yeah, can I take photo? Did, uh, Commissioner want to come down and take a picture with this?
I thought, I thought it was clear. I thought it was clear about it.
That's one way of seeing it out.
I can't, kind of confused.
Yeah, too disabled.
Yeah, too less than our commission.
Thank you, appreciate you. I think most know that especially with the, uh, parks and rec, director did an outstanding job at the time here. I've seen the grant, say that you can get some of the tax submission of funding.
Uh, Mr. Pickney? Mr. Pickney, I just want to present, we'll say, I want to thank you without, uh, without you.
Lynn Latner available and Jacqueline Ramsey are, is in, are either one present?
Mr. Pickney?
Oh, you got to take it, okay.
I just want to thank you, because to me, I feel without you, the Centennial events wouldn't have happened. So, I want to thank you for everything.
I appreciate it, like I said before, um, I learned a lot being here at Pahokee. Uh, I don't regret anything that I went through. Uh, this is a great city and a great town.
That's okay, you did represent.
Also, next we have a presentation, uh, that is Annie Iffel, uh, the project director of Healthier Glaze will be doing.
Good evening, commissioners, um, and the public. Uh, my name is Annie Iffel, the project director for Healthier Glaze. I am going to be as brief as possible. I just wanted to, um, come and, um, present our upcoming mini-grant campaign. Um, so for those who don't know, about three years ago, um, Healthier Glaze wanted to invest our dollars back into the community by, um, supporting projects either by residents or nonprofit organizations. So, in the past three years, we have invested almost over sixty thousand dollars in mini-grant projects, um, between Bell Glazette and Pahokee. Um, for example, Ms. Christine Bowden was one of our mini-grant recipients. She was able to use some of the dollars to, um, do care packages during the time of COVID to, um, help seniors to stay active, um, keep their minds active during the pandemic. Uh, we also had Mr. Jeffrey Willis. He received a, uh, mini-grant last year, um, for us to do, um, a fishing clinic for kids, um, in the Glaze community. So, we're getting ready to do that again. Um, the mini-grants will be starting September twenty-seventh and you will have until October eighteenth, um, by four fifty-nine P M. to submit your application. You can submit your application either, um, by email to Healthier Glaze or you can drop it off at any of the three libraries, um, throughout the community. And we'll have boxes at all three libraries as well as copies of the hard application. This is a great opportunity, um, because Healthier Glaze is going into our fifth year of being in the community and, uh, working with residents to try to, um, unlock our community strengths. And we want to try to make sure that we, that the residents are aware that we have dollars here. The intent behind doing the mini-grants was also to educate our residents about grant writing process because there are dollars that residents can apply for, for example, the NEAT grant. But sometimes you have residents who have never written a grant before or never had any experience participating on a grant. So, what we wanted to do is give residents hands-on, um, knowledge on how to apply for grants, what things to look for, so we can build up their capacity and give them the tools that they need so if they want to apply for the NEAT grant, they could. And so, I did bring, um, flyers with the mini-grant information and what the criteria is. One of the things we did this year, we put a Q R code, so you can scan it and download the application. So, if you get one, I did bring some extra copies. So, if you, um, do get the application, if you submit the application before, um, September twenty-seventh, it will not be counted. And if it does anything after October eighteenth at five P M., it won't be counted. So, um, I, but I did want to make sure that we did, uh, provide these. I do have, uh, one for each commission here. And then the, um, last thing I want to talk about is, um, September is Suicide Prevention Month. There's so many different campaigns that go on, um, throughout the year. But the, um, the V A. is doing a virtual health summit, um, on September twenty-first from nine M. to one P. M. And then there's a flyer and a link. I would ask if the city can put this on your page so that residents can, um, scan the code and register. This is a virtual event. That's all I have. Oh, before I forget, um, we will be doing an information session for anybody who want to know more about how to complete the application for the mini-grant. That will be September twenty-fourth at one P. M. via Zoom. And so, if I, what I, I did put it on our Healthier Glaze page, uh, on our Facebook page, but if you want me to, I could send it to the city of Pahokee and they could put it on the city of Pahokee page so that you can go scan, um, register and then, um, participate on the, um, information session. You do not have to, it's not required to attend the information session in order to apply for a grant. But I encourage everybody, if you want to do it, do it. I noticed the ones who did participate in the information session, they did better because they, they followed the directions for the grant. And that's all I have. Oh, I, I can leave these in the back for anybody who's interested. And thank you for your time.
Ms. Iffel, if someone had got it once before, can they apply again? If someone applied once before, can they apply again?
Absolutely, yes, yes. So, it's not, um, you know how some grants, if you apply the first time, you can't apply again? That's not for Healthier Glaze.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
And then, um, last thing I would say on behalf of, um, Jingle with Empower Healthcare, uh, she wasn't able to be here tonight, but she wanted to extend a personal thank you to Mayor Bab and Commissioner Bowden for coming out. And, um, Ms. Boulay also came, um, for the grand opening of the, uh, clinic that's over there at First United Methodist Church.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next we'll have our city manager introduce, uh, the next presenter as far as city of Pahokee health benefits. Mr. Lucas.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Garing. We're here to hear what you have to say as far as our benefits and, uh, things for our commission to consider for, uh, me to see if they can do a consensus on moving forward.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Commissioner.
I'm Cliff Garing with Garing Group. We're a public sector employee benefit specialist and very happy to be here tonight before you all. Um, I have good news, very positive news about the group employee benefits package for the city, uh, employees of the city of Pahokee. Uh, this year, all the benefit carriers were up for renewal. Um, so from your medical plan, which is with Florida Blue, Florida Blue is the brand name for Blue Cross Blue Shield of Florida. Uh, you have your medical insurance through that plan. It's a rich, it's a co-pay plan which, um, looks out for the employees from the standpoint of, of most of the services, including things like urgent care and M R Is and inpatient admission, the more costly your items and frequently used, um, go towards co-pays as opposed to large deductibles. Um, the ancillary is all with Humana, another national carrier. Uh, it's a dual-option D H M O. P P O. dental plan. Uh, the D H M O., which, um, the, the city subsidizes fifty percent of the single, uh, the single cost in the H M O. Uh, there was no increase this year in that plan. On the medical that I just spoke about, there was a five point one percent increase on the medical with Florida Blue. Uh, Humana also covers, the city, um, covers basic life and A D. And D. Insurance for the employees, a twenty-five thousand dollar benefit, uh, per employee through Humana. Uh, there was no increase this year as well with Humana on that, uh, which was negotiated, I'm sorry, on the voluntary life that the employees pay for. The, the basic life that the city covers, the increase was approximately three hundred eighty-five dollars for the entire year, which was a very attractive compared to some of the other carriers that came in. And then finally, Humana also covers you on your vision, group vision program, and that was also negotiated, no increase with the two-year rate guarantee. Um, we did however, the city did however, R F. P. the benefits. We went out to the entire market and, um, even with the, the somewhat attractive renewals, we had approximately a dozen different medical and ancillary carriers respond to the bids. On the medical side, just to give you an idea where some of these packages came in at on the medical side, we asked carriers to match the benefits as closely as possible. Three carriers came in with proposals on the medical that could, that could even come close to matching the benefits. One was AdMed at a twenty and a half percent increase over current cost compared to the Florida Blue five percent. Humana came in at a thirty point nine percent increase. Both of those medical carriers also provided plans that reduced benefits in various areas. Um, similar to that on the, the ancillary benefits with the before-mentioned dental, life and vision programs. Uh, other carriers came in, there was, uh, one or, uh, uh, one or two carriers that also came in less expensive, but they were reducing benefits as well in many areas. Uh, in addition, um, very recently, we had a, a committee, I would approximate, there was over a dozen employees, uh, in the, the committee. And on the vision and dental programs, the employees, uh, do pay towards that on a voluntary basis. And each of the employees during those meetings were asked, would you go to one of the other plans if you pay less to have your benefits reduced? And to each employee, each one of them said absolutely not. So, um, they wanted to, quite a few families and employees are on plans utilizing the dental and the vision. And because of that, they wanted to keep the benefits, uh, that they had since they were subsidizing a lot of, a good portion of that. So, based on that, uh, we respectfully request that the commission approve Florida Blue, Blue Cross Blue Shield on the medical, Humana, um, on the dental with the D H M O. P P O. dual-option plan, Humana on the life and voluntary life, uh, program, and also Humana on the group employee vision. And I wanted to open it up if there are any questions.
Yeah, I have a question, because I really don't understand it.
Sure.
Like, I see Florida Blue, I mean, there's like three pages of medical and they basically have the same titles with different amounts, so, and then it has, can you explain all those?
Sure, and, and yes, absolutely. So, in the detailed package with, which has all the backup with all the, the plans that you're alluding to, the city actually currently has in place right now was called a triple option. So, you actually have three medical plans in place with Florida Blue to give the employees a choice to choose from. The plan that the majority of the employees are on right now is, so on the very first page, you have three plans to the left and three plans to the right. They're basically identical. Most of the employees are enrolled in the fourteen-two-five-six plan. So, it's the third column over on page one and then the sixth column over on page two. The third column over on page one are the current rates at the bottom and then the renewal is the, the, the last column to the right. That's the five point one percent increase. And those, that plan is the plan that the, the city at this time contributes eighty percent towards the employee single coverage. So, consequently, most of the employees are enrolled in that. The reason why there are two other plans is to give some of the employees that have some dependents that they may want on the plan, and there are a, a, a couple that have that, uh, to allow them a plan that maybe has a little lesser benefits but brings down their costs so they don't have to pay quite so much. So, those plans give them some rate relief. So, the, uh, the recommendation is based on the fourteen-two-five-six plan and, uh, we're actually wanting to eliminate the middle plan and then keep the, uh, fourteen-two-five-three plan because there are a couple people enrolled in that for, uh, who have dependents.
So, you're saying eliminate fourteen-two-five-six and we're gonna, wanna pick up sixteen-two-five-three?
Um, sorry, we were, um, to eliminate, uh, sixteen-two-five-two because no one's currently enrolled in that plan and no one's enrolled in it the last couple of years. So, that way it'll keep them with the, the upper option, which most of the employees are on right now and the city contributes eighty percent of the single cost. And then keep the other option for rate relief for some of the, the folks that have dependents on the plan, maybe. Then maybe it's too much of a burden to, to, for the cost for the sixteen, fourteen-two-five-six plan.
My, my question would be to the, to the management administration and the commission out of the option that it gave us, the recommendation. uh, the option that he gave us, the recommendation, do any side disagree with any of those recommendations? And the reason why? You, you heard each of his recommendations?
Yes, we, we, uh, staff had a chance to, uh, hear, uh, the program last Thursday, well, Wednesday, uh, when they came to a senior staff meeting and I had all staff that could come, come to that. So in this proposed program, uh, basically, we have an 80% coverage that the city pays on behalf of a, uh, single person, employee or commissioner. And one of the things that's going to cost us is $216,074. If we wanted to go up to 100% and nothing's out of the employees or commissioners' pocket, it would cost us additional $55,000 or a total of $287,000 based on 29 employees. This shows here 22 employees. So just, just putting that out there.
So these figures are not correct, the totals?
The, the totals are correct. He, uh, Mr. Garing hasn't, uh, uh, considered 100% as we had talked about in the, in the staff meeting, so.
Let me ask you this question. You've worked with a lot of cities. Is it customary for the city to, uh, pay 100% of the employees? I, I know it vary from city to city, I'm just saying in the majority of them on average, uh, what is the customary, uh, thing most cities kind of follow?
Well, for the most part, uh, cities usually ask, uh, an employee to contribute. It's been 50/50 in my career where, um, if the city has it and it's not a strain, they usually would do customarily 100%. But in this case, 80% is fine. A lot of the staffs that they could afford, uh, was it about $70 a month, each check? Maybe a little more if we did instead of 26 pay periods, 24 pay periods. So that way two of their checks are not affected with any deductibles coming out.
If I could speak to that as well, sir. We handle probably somewhere, I want to misquote, somewhere probably around 70 to 80%, somewhere in between there, 70, 70 to 80% of the municipalities in Palm Beach County. And out of those, it is a pretty good mix, but when I was looking at them earlier, it seems a little bit more of them do do the 100% if they can. Uh, sometimes it's a, it's a lower percentage based on, but usually, uh, if a group has two or three plans, in this case you, you have three and they go to two, um, they'll consider that primary plan that most people are on. And it, you know, it all depends on budgets, but a lot of times you will see them do the 100% on the single. I see it's around a 50% of mix as well, but a little bit favoring the side of the 100%.
That's something we could sit as a, uh, commission, whether we want to consider going to the 100%. That's the reason I kind of put that out to see whether or not that was something we wanted to consider doing. Now as far as that single though, but normally family, there's mostly always a charge.
But. But explain to them, like you did, uh, uh, staff, where your contribution of the single goes over to, towards your family or you and a child, that dollar amount does go over and reduces it. So you, you still would pay the difference out of your pocket as an employee or commissioner.
Sure. So right, right now, the way it works is with the 80%, uh, as he was saying, with the 80%, that carries over to 80% towards the 16253 plan. So the employees that have, have dependents, they're getting that 80%. So as City Manager Lucas said, if, if you, uh, if you, um, approved 100%, that extra 20% amount will go over to the dependents too. They still have to buy up for the dependent costs as well, but they still will get the extra 20% carried over to them too. It's all a matter of, uh, most cities or municipalities look at the budget and just look at, at how it's, how it looks, um, and then, you know, relieve the burden on the employees a little bit more.
I was hoping to get mayor consensus from, uh, the commission, uh, tonight so that open enrollment can start the 13th through the 16th, uh, because we have to have it done before October 1st in order for everybody's benefits to, to move forward.
Just what I would suggest, we're currently at 80. We can go up to 100% pan. I would say let's do 90 and only require the employees to put in 10% of their health amount. That's a suggestion. At least we'll move into wars to hide you without doing it totally at one point. I don't know what's all of the other commissions doing.
Is it just for the employee?
No, it would be for.
For the entire family? For the entire family? Because usually it's the, the, the employee.
Right, that, that, that means the employee would be out of pocket 10% as a single, but your whole, 90% will be applied to whichever plan you have. If you did employee only, if you did employee and spouse, that, that 90% would go towards paying for your plan, you still be out of pocket that difference of carrying your spouse, your child or your family. It's a good deal.
Which would be if, if it's three, it's 30%.
Well, Mr. Garing, can you, can you do some numbers so they kind of get a little more clarity?
So, so right now, the, on the 16, 14256 plan, 80% of that, that 799 rate, 80% of that right now would be, is, is covered of the single rate. If you go up to, say if you went up to the 100%, that'd be 20% more. So that, that number now would be applied to any of the dependent tiers over in the 16253 plan. So they would be, so if you voted for the 100% today, the single would be getting 20% more contribution from what they're getting now. And any of the dependent tiers would also be getting 20% more contribution compared to what they get now. Because there, there is no cost towards the dependent coverage except 100, except what you pay towards the single coverage. But if you increase the single by 20%, all of the families benefit also, that extra 20% amount of the single rate.
So in the last column on page one, what he's saying is that 14256, if we did 90% of that, that's another 10% on top of that 2,032, correct? So.
We get that number from the 2,032.
At the bottom, at the bottom.
Look at, look at your far right-hand column.
At the bottom.
Right here it says 14256. Looking on page one, your far right corner. And then look at the bottom, they're telling you the.
Right here.
Yeah, I have 16.
No, it's 2,000, 2,100, 1,032. 100 to 16.
So right here, when you go down this column here, right here is what collectively we would pay plus 10% more. So that's another 20,000, right? Approximately?
Correct. Comes out to about another $40 per month on the single rate.
So that means we won't have to pay for insurance? The city will pay for it completely?
For the, um.
Single.
For, for the single coverage, if you decided to go to 100%.
Single.
And then that extra 20% that you apply to the single rate would carry over to the dependent rates as well. So it'd be an even percentage increase across the board.
But the mayor was just suggesting for consensus at 90%. Split that difference. And then next year, you know, uh, we've been fortunate, there's been no major claims, no nothing, so that can be penalized against us. And, uh, we're really getting a good deal and we're, we're with Blue Cross Blue Shield as well. So it's a reputable company.
So the question to the commission, we can remain at the 80%? Increase it to 90%? Or 100? I'm just suggesting that Miller Ground can do 90% versus the 80 or the 100. But it's up to commission. I think staff would prefer it would be 100%.
No, I'm sure.
100%.
Yeah, but we're right now, we have 80.
Where, where, um, do we have the funds? Where are we getting the funds?
Uh, that, that would be from general funds, uh, and it's, we have it as a place marker at, uh, 287,000. I can call Susan to see exactly where she has it at in the budget. I believe I, I put it in the budget at 287,000 at 100%. And if we, other than that, it would just save money as you reduce. So.
Those for employee incentives?
Right.
Well, it's, it's the whole team.
Yeah. That was to help employees out. So I don't have a problem with it.
I, I, I would have suggested 100 of that. I, I, I can deal with it, but my suggestion would be the 90. And maybe the next year or the next time we look at it, maybe try and increase to 100, but.
So, so at 90%, that's additional 20,000 overall. So that's like 220,000.
And at 100, how much?
That's at 90%.
Just get the 100.
100, how much would the 100 be? 200 or what?
It was 200 and.
Well, it's based on the number of employees. So if I, I think to date, only one commissioner has the plan, but if I add four to the 22, that's 26, and I just figured add three more people just in case. And then there's where you determine, we determine that at 287,000, correct?
Correct, for the extra positions.
For, for the extra positions, but if they don't, if we don't take that, then the price adjusts down.
All right, Commissioner, try to think.
I, 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 I mean, I, I think that the employees, for the most part, you know, you know, don't make enough as it is, so.
Right.
Just by giving them a break on the insurance. I don't know what y'all think, but.
So we make a motion that we will go to 100% with the insurance?
I second it.
Kevin, motion then by Vice Mayor Marvin and.
What was it?
Second by Commissioner Gonzalez to go with 100%.
But he, but he put it in the budget, if they was to pick it up now though, it would be, it would cover it.
Call for question here in nine, ready for a vote. Roll call, Melon Clerk.
Vice Mayor Marvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
I think we should go with the 90. I'll just say no.
Commissioner Perez?
This is for one year, right?
Yes. We need to move.
I said no, I think 90.
I would say no, I would recommend the 90.
So make the motion for 90.
Okay, we amend it to 90.
Yeah, make the motion for 90. Make the motion.
I'd make a motion that we amend, uh, um, employer coverage on the insurance to be 90%.
I second.
Could it be moved by Commissioner Perez and second by Commissioner Bolden?
And it's still helping the employees, so either way, so that's pretty good.
Call for question here in nine, ready for a vote. Roll call, Melon Clerk.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
No, still say 100.
Commissioner Marv, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Marvin?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Motion passed for the one majority, 90%.
10%, that's not bad at all.
Then open and roll.
10% ain't bad.
Open enrollment will start the 13th through the 16th, correct?
Sure, absolutely. And for, uh, October 1st effective date is when the new, the new rates would go into effect. And then the rest of the recommendation inside the Florida Blue was Humana on the ancillary for the dental life, uh, voluntary life and group vision plan.
That, staff recommends, uh, that we take both those plans. Little, what is it, out of pocket for dental?
For the dental, actually, on the, on the, um, on the plan that the, uh, the city contributes towards, there's no increase this year on the DHMO and the employees via PPO. And that went up 3%. And, uh, each of the employees in that meeting said absolutely for the benefits that they're getting. And then on the group life insurance, it was $385 for the entire year increase in the basic life, no increase on the employees on the voluntary life, and then no increase for the employees on the voluntary vision as well.
So out of pocket, if it was just, uh, a family for, for vision, how much is it for vision so they understand?
Sure. And on the vision, um, the out of pocket for family, it's $29.36 per month on a monthly basis, and there's no increase on that on October 1st, so it would stay the same. And for employee only, uh, which is voluntary, the employees cover that, it's $9.83 per month. It gives them free, uh, $10 eye exams, $25, um, co-pays on materials, exams once, once every year, lenses, contacts lenses once every year and frames once every 24 months.
So we gotta vote them now?
Well, I guess it's, those are only two things out, the vision and then dental is, yeah, because it's three separate, you got the health and then you got vision. And then you got dental.
And on the dental, it's no increase to the city, um, just a slight increase, uh, to the employees. Uh, life, no increase, just a $385 for the year on the city and the vision, no increase across the board.
And that's 385 per employee?
What, what was that question?
Is that 385 dollars per employee?
On which plan? Oh, yes, I'm sorry, no, no, actually, that's a great question. That's the, the incredible thing about it. On the group life insurance for the 25,000 benefit for every employee across the board, the 385 dollars is total for all the employees to be covered. That's the extent of the increase for the year is 385 dollars.
Okay, so that's. Okay, so that's, so, so that's three things they're gonna vote on. Life at twenty-five K, no impact dental and vision.
Dental and vision, correct.
Now, what's the impact? So it's, it's, uh, three fifty-five for the whole city on their life for the basic twenty-five K? Then, uh, what is it, the impact, uh, to the city for dental?
Uh, no impact for the city for dental because.
Because we're taking deductibles from the employee, okay. Then vision, same way?
And vision, same way, no impacts.
Okay.
And no increase. And I will say overall, some of the, the, um, renewals we've been seeing this year, excuse me, are in the double digits, twenty percent total range. So to have a, only a five percent of your medical and then to, to get, you're getting on the ancillary is a very positive year for the city.
Do we need to make a final vote on the entire plan, all the recommendations? I entertain a motion to that effect unless somebody got some input on.
Well, they just voted on the other, so you see.
Medical, we just got it.
Take, I move for motion to do that, recommend moving.
Second. Wait, you didn't make it?
No, I'm, 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 I sent the commission.
Oh, okay, well, I make a motion that we, um, pick up the plans. I guess there's no difference, right?
Yeah, just the, just three hundred and eighty-five dollars. Everything else is just out of the employees' pocket, correct, through deduction.
Okay.
Second. You didn't make it?
I already said it.
Been moved by Commissioner Perez and.
Who said it?
Second by Commissioner Gonzalez. Call for questions. Here in nine, you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Mayor Baath?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you, Commissioner. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank, uh, our team, uh, members of our team. Mark, Mark Rodriguez, who's the benefits consultant on this. Excuse me, um, Sam Marquini, who's the senior, um, senior benefits analyst. And also Taylor Meshum, who grew up just down the road, neighboring city in South Bay. Uh, she's your account manager for the city of Pohokee. So I wanted to recognize them for the hard work they put into this evaluation with all the carriers. And thank you very much to the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Old business. We don't have any access listed on the agenda, so we'll move to the public hearing. We have two resolution on our public hearing. The first resolution is resolution twenty-two-two dash thirty-three. Senator Turner?
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pohokee, Florida, adopting a tentative milage rate for fiscal year commencing October one, twenty-twenty-two through September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, pursuant to section two hundred point zero-six-five Florida statutes, providing for an effective date.
Mayor, um, if you will, I understood from, uh, the, uh, our consultant, Susan, that we need to, and from, uh, Ms. Palacca, we need to read all of it in because it's the section one adoptions of the tentative milage. It's the public hearing date and the effective date to take, uh, what to be done on.
Okay. If you will, City Attorney, could you read the entire section therefore so it can be included in the minutes?
The section of.
Page here that Mr. Lucas had referred to. We just read basically the title. He's saying that we need to have the title.
Can you give it to me?
Resolution.
Oh, you don't, you don't have it?
You're saying read the entire resolution into the record?
Sections one and two.
That's what he's saying that our, just the person say must be done.
All right, section one, adoption of representations. I think, um, what she was probably saying is calling out the, um, the, the, the rate, is that?
Well, you got the milage, you got the section that it's from, the date that it's, uh, allowed on, and, uh, and all your whereas's and then.
I, I think she's just saying you would be reading in the, what's required is that you have to say what the, what it is over the rollback rate. Is that what you're going to?
Okay, so section one, two, three and four then.
Okay. Adoption of the foregoing whereas clauses paragraphs are, um, hereby ratified and confirmed is hereby true and the same are hereby made a specific part of this resolution tentative milage rate. Section two, the City Commission of the City of Pohokee hereby tentatively adopts a milage rate of six point five four one nine mils for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-three, commencing October one, twenty-twenty-two through September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, which is six point five four one nine per one thousand of taxable property value within the city of Pohokee. This milage rate represents a six point one seven percent increase over the rollback rate of six point one six one seven mils. That is all that's required to be read.
Thank you, Senator Turner. Senator Manager, if you would like, to give a brief explanation of resolution twenty-two-two dash thirty-three?
This is from the trim from, uh, back in July. And we are, uh, confirming that tentatively, uh, that we're locking in this milage rate and it'll be confirmed on the twenty-seventh.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, the pub, there is a public hearing.
Yes.
The second and final public hearing on the budget is scheduled for September the twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two at six PM, um, here in the commission chambers at City Hall six, I'm sorry, five, three sixty, East Main Street, Pohokee, Florida, three-three-four-seven-six.
Thank you. At this time, I'm gonna open the public hearing for resolution twenty-two-two dash thirty-three to give anyone in the audience an opportunity to speak on this resolution. Hearing is seen on one, uh, close the public hearing. City Commissioners having had resolution twenty-two-two dash thirty-three properly read into the minutes by our City Attorney, properly explained by City Manager. What is your pleasure?
Remember I make a motion? Remember I make a motion that we would adopt, uh, resolution twenty-two-two thirty-three?
I second. It is moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly seconded by Commissioner Bolden for the adoption of resolution twenty-two-two dash thirty-three on first reading. Call for questions. Here in nine, you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Hold on a second.
Uh, Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Baath?
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Now we have resolution twenty-two-two dash thirty-four, Senator Turner.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pohokee, Florida, providing for the adoption and funding of the tentative municipal budget in the amount of nine million, seven hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars for the city of Pohokee, Florida, for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty-twenty-two and ending September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney and City Manager. Could you give us a brief explanation of resolution twenty-two-two dash thirty-four?
Yes, this, uh, is our tentative budget. And that it's just tentative, it can be amended, um, at the next meeting, which is, uh, September twenty-seventh.
Thank you. At this time, I will open a public hearing for resolution twenty-two-two dash thirty-four to give anyone in the audience, uh, opportunity to speak on this resolution if it's your desire.
Do they have?
Could you come to the mic?
Does the audience have the resolution?
I'm not one to sit sure that. Please let me read. Yeah, the, but, yeah, we won't have a budget in the bike for the residents, but I'm not sure whether or not that was done at this time. What we'll do too, uh, certainly by our next, uh, meeting and our final reading and, uh, passage, we'll make sure we get copies circulated in the community. You can come up to City Hall or even in the bike. I do apologize, we don't have one now present. Uh, I'm not sure if we can do anything about it. Huh?
We can get a copy made to speak to your, you know, your point, you know. So we have the, the summary here, let me, uh, well.
So he's going to have copies now, James?
That's right, but I'm, I'm just asking because I know in the past that I spoke to Mr. Picken about doing a project and he told me that he would have to ask the City Manager if he could do it. I said, it's not even a budget. He said, well, we don't have a budget. It's, everything was in one of the pot.
Every department has a budget. Every department has a budget. Yeah, every department have a budget.
Yeah, I understand, I understand, I understand, but this is what I'm telling you. What, what I'm saying is, in the past, I know we spoke to Picken.
He wanted to know if every, like, parts were made with their budget. The, but, yeah, and every, and it does have a budget. Every department, it has a budget. Every department has a budget.
Well, are they allowed to spend? Is, is, is Mr. Witten gonna be allowed to spend his budget? I mean, he got some budget.
He's allowed to do things within his budget, but it still has to go to.
All right, listen.
He's at party.
Mr. Um, Lucas?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna ask you a question, cause I'm tired of this. Is, is, is Mr. Witten gonna be able to, in reparations? Do whatever in his budget? He put, he put his budget in, I, he put that in, like, three hundred trophies for, like, basketball, football. Oh, he would make it to do it. Without you, like, telling him, no, you can't do this, no, he's not, it was in his budget. Because in the past, we used to have a budget for reparations that I could go in there and, 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 and say, like, okay, we could do this, we could do this with our budget. We put budget, we put budget in for hotels, we put budget in for traveling. We should do, we knew what we was gonna do.
So.
When I bought it with reparations, I'm, I, I didn't have to go to one of those boys and say, oh, can't, no, I, cause when I pulled it up, it was in there. And we already knew what we can and cannot do. And do, you know, why, and fundraising, that, that's the thing. But when Mr. Picken was the director, I asked him that when I went to him about doing a project. He told me he would have to go take it to Mr. Chandler and he would have to approve it. I'm like, but it's in what you did, you didn't do a budget? So that's what I'm asking now, uh, Mr. Witten gonna be handcuffed like that or is he gonna be able to, whatever he put in his budget, he can do it?
So whatever he's put in the budget, he'd be able to do it? And one of the things that I'll be having all departments do is something that the mayor wants is a sustainability. So at the next meeting, you're gonna see where they put together, how they're gonna sustain themselves through corporate sponsorships, fundraising and things like that, so you guys see that as well.
Okay, no, I have a problem with it, I'm just saying, I just want to, I don't want you to, to put him in a situation where he handcuffed that he can't do anything without running to you first. You know, but in his budget, I think he should just write it out and say, well, okay, yeah, we can do this, so we have a budget for this.
Yeah, and if things do fall short.
It's probably still has to be approved.
Correct.
They do a purchase order.
Exactly.
No, I'm not saying, I'm not, no, 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 no. No, 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 if you budget, if he budgeted that.
Three be one when you get a chance.
If he did a budget where he's gonna take a, a team to national basketball and we're gonna take like ten days. You know, if it's, if it's in his budget, why should he have to go and, and, and just go and, like, approach order to him, to her and say, we go on for ten days, it gonna be, it gonna be eight thousand dollars or whatever. It may not be that much, but I'm just saying, whatever it's gonna be, should that be it? Or he have to, like, come in and get it approved?
That should be it, it's already budgeted.
Yeah, it's already budgeted, that's what I'm saying. And that's, and that's what, that's what I'm saying. I didn't want to be in a situation where everything be macro managed, where you can't do anything. If, you know, you have, I mean, the Recreation Department personnel, you have Mr. Um, what his name, Bill, but he should be able to do their job. They can't do the job, you could be macro managing everything they can do. That's all I'm asking.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Regina Boland, Pohokee. I think what some of the people in the audience are referring to, and, and I just got handed this again, but this was on the, the agenda tonight. We're asking for a complete breakdown of every department and broken down to, like he said, if they're gonna spend three hundred dollars on trophies, it says trophies, three hundred dollars. If they're gonna travel, it says two thousand dollars. A complete breakdown of every department is how we've always gotten the budget.
So you guys want the worksheets? So that'll be completed by this Friday, the complete worksheet where you have the tabs? Is that what you're referring to? And it shows everything detailed out?
Every line item.
Yes. So she did an overall summary of those things and she's digging into the detail cause we're finishing up closing out twenty-twenty-one.
So we'll, we'll be able to go to City Hall on Friday and get it?
Probably Monday. Probably Monday.
I just don't understand how we could vote on something when we don't have it.
Well, nobody's seen the actual numbers.
I cannot vote on this until I see it.
It's the tentative, okay, so if you don't vote on it, then we gotta have a whole new public hearing. And it's tentative, it's not locking anything in. You're gonna be able to dive into the whole budget. It, it, it's, uh.
Are they not gonna have any, any workshops with the line items where they can dive into that? Before they vote on it?
And, and, and by the way, we just got this Saturday and today is Monday. And, and, and look at it.
Eighty-five pages.
Plus, plus stuff that we need to go through, plus all the other stuff that was passed today.
Hey, Mr. Lu. No, good. I was, uh, giving you a call so that we can get an understanding. With you on speaker here at the permission meeting, uh, the public, uh, has a, a question, so, um, okay, the, the question, one, one of the questions is, can we do a public, another public hearing that breaks down the numbers you're gonna have to provide it to the city by Friday of the worksheet? They're talking about the budget itself, the entire budget. So you, you're on speaker. I think your mic is in the back of your phone. Talk, Susan.
Yes, I just think it often is everyone. So what's the question?
Well, you said a big question, Regina.
So the question is, will the entire budget, the worksheet be available to the public by this Friday?
For each department?
For each department?
Line item. Line item for each department.
But I'm already provide that in the budget, sir.
No.
And yes, it should be ready by Friday. Because I don't know what's in front of them, so I can't speak on what's in front of them, but they should have it by Friday.
Well, in the past, we had the summary, but they, you know how we have the worksheet that has the tabs?
There's a tab, so there's a tab for every department. And in those, in the budget package, it doesn't have. There's a, so there's a tab for every department and in those, in the budget package, it doesn't have that. Because I don't know what was given in the budget package.
We're talking about a line item for every department.
You can have that before Friday. You can have that at least by Friday morning.
We don't want a summary. We want.
Yeah, we, they, they want it.
Yeah, I understand. That's what I'm trying to say. If it is not in the package, there is a sheet that says what the revenues are, what every department, like, item is. If it's not in your package right now, yes, they can have it by Friday when I get to the city of Pahokee. I said, yes.
She'd answer. Okay.
She's not.
Yes, she'd get it to us.
She's saying yes.
Yes, because it's not in the packet is what, uh, the citizens are concerned with.
Okay, so I, yeah, I'm just saying, I don't know what you know about.
Then the other question the public has is a workshop. Can we, once we provide it, to go over the, uh, the itemized things individually so that everybody's on one page? Can we do a workshop?
Mr. Lucas, I thought that's what you had on Friday. If they need to have another workshop, then they will have to then have to have another tentative budget meeting before, remember, you have to approve this budget before October 1st, okay?
Okay, so if we did the, we get the detail, uh.
I think that was satisfied.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we could, we'll make sure we make copies on Friday to have it sit up.
Thank, thank you, Miss Susan.
But when we're going to go over it, we cannot go over it here and vote on it because you seen how many pages there is.
So, so.
Yeah.
So we could schedule with Miss Susan, uh, a time for either on the phone or you guys come by City Hall and she could go over any questions you have.
The thing is that, you know, it's always, it's always that, that's mainly.
So you want it, you want it like that, right? With all the tabs? That's what you guys are at? See, each, each department's on it and the tab is itemized.
It's not touchscreen. You have to, yeah, it's not touchscreen. You have to use the arrow.
Use that. Let's do this. So I'm going to go by and then here's the next one. See, go click like that.
Eleven hundred, the twelve hundred, the thirteen hundred. It's each department broken up.
Yeah.
So it is there. It just, um, she had some additions and subtractions to make, but they're ready to be printed.
Yeah, so, all right, okay.
That's what we're saying is, y'all do it as a meeting, then we're not going to, we're not going to have time to look at it or ask any questions unless you have a meeting that's just about that workshop.
Yeah. Are, are there any in addition to questions from the audience? Hearing none. I close this public hearing on Resolution 2022-34. City Commissioners having had Resolution 2022-34 properly read into the minutes by our city attorney, properly explained by our city manager. What is your pleasure?
I have a question. Um, you said.
Just get a motion and then we'll ask questions. There's a motion to move this resolution forward on first hearing?
Mayor, may I make a motion that we will, um, adopt Resolution 2022-34 with questions, please?
A second.
It is a move by Vice Mayor Mervin and proper second by Commissioner Gonzalez for the moving forward of, uh, Resolution, uh, 2022-34. Call for questions, Commissioner.
Mayor, on, in the packet, um, I don't know. First off, we got to understand how the budget, our program, how, how, how it works. First off, in the packet, I know the resident didn't get this. I don't think, they think it was on, um, was it in the agenda on the? So it wasn't on the agenda?
We got it Friday.
Okay, well, 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 see, that's, that's one of, I think that's one of, because they did not, they can't see this. But so it is questions to ask because one of the tentative budget, one of the approved, the nine million dollar tentative budget. In here, it does have a broke, breakdown of every category. It's just not saying what parts and wreck, this, the eight hundred S for Mr. was, was saying. But it does have the breakdown of every, um, your cap, every fund, every, every, uh, category that your money sits in, in, in the bank, where your Aqua Fund, which I have a question on that one. Your Aqua Fund, your Henderson Fund, your, your General Fund, your, um, what is it? Uh, your Marina Fund, your Cemetery Fund, your Debt Service Fund, your Special Revenue Fund, your Henderson Fund, all of it has, it does have. That's what this resolution is for. You're approving a tentative budget, not actual, but a tentative budget of those departments. Where, um, for example, your, your General Fund says there's five million, one hundred and five thousand dollars, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars. But, um, I understand what they said. We should have been had that, uh, what Mr. Borden was asking for. Because that's how you break down every department, break down every category. They can see actual what's, what's, what's there in every department. But this is here is just your tentative budget of your, uh, not approving, is not approving your actual budget for each department. It's your tentative budget for what's in every category, what, what they're. I guess I'm trying to explain it right so everybody can understand. It's just a tentative, but not in stone budget. This is a tentative budget of your nine million dollars of all of your funds, where they're at. You're, that, that, that's what this is. So David, like you say, you come out, you get that other one, break down all of your, your categories. You show you where, what's in your, your parts and wreck, what's in your city commission budget, what's in this. Exactly. But this is just your tentative budget of your, um, funds is what we're approving tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what this is. I, I hope I made that a little clear.
In addition to questions?
Well, I don't. I mean, like, I, I have a, I have a lot of questions. I have questions on things that we're supposed to have been covered by, by the grant, um, you know, uh, like the cemetery, you know, uh, the PACE program, the General Fund, uh, things that, that are already that, that there's grants for and, and everything that's in here, so I don't. You know, I, I, I have a lot of questions on this, on all these items. And, and this is what, what I was able to go through because, you know, we just got it on Saturday. So I don't know how, how. I don't know. To, to me, when you do a budget, you, you, you have the previous, you have the one that you're, that you're suggesting. You have, you know, all your numbers. You have time to prepare this. We're always preparing this right at the last minute. You know, you, we're given a hundred pages and two days to review it and come and vote on it. And, you know, these are numbers. This is money. This is, this is, you know, the future of the city. It shouldn't just be a rush, rush thing, in my opinion.
Your new fiscal year is getting ready to begin. That's why.
October 1st.
So I understand where it's coming from, but he's saying that he's presenting you with a tentative, uh, uh, budget, which is not set in stone as what Tasha was trying to explain. So you still have time to go back and rectify it.
Any, any, in addition to comments or questions from the commission?
Yeah, just one, I just want to bring a clarity that, um, that was asked it. Um, so we were just getting a clarity and transparency with the committee. And it has deals with, I think we hit it a little bit with the Aqua Fund, with, with the balance. Because some didn't understand here because they seen the one point five and not the whole three point, whatever it was. That the, the reason why you see the one point five here, because that is what they're projected to use in the 2023. So that would be the tentative bu, in this, in this budget. And then the other one point five would be your 2024, what they're intended to use in 2024. So we just wanted to make it clear because it, you know, where's the three point, whatever. But that's, I just wanted to make a little clarity on, on, huh, yes, we did. Yes, we did. So, so that's what, that's why you see the one point five. It is just a tentative and a projective of what they looking to spend in 2023. So I just wanted to break a little clarity on that.
In addition to comments from the commission? Okay. Hearing none. Are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Borden?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Baugh?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion and resolution passed by unanimous vote. Now we're moving to Resolution 2022-35, City Attorney.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida for approval of change order number six to Resolution Number 2021-02 pertaining to the Florida Department of Transportation, FDLT Contract G-1753 FM 4420300154-1 Barfield Highway Reconstruction Project that's set forth in Exhibit A, Providing for an Effective Date.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. City Manager?
Yes, uh, this is for a change order for Barfield High, Highway Order, uh, Change Order Number Six. Uh, this is for the, uh, conflicts with AT&amp;T Duck Banks. Rizzo is seeking $27,842.29 in change order to cover, uh, the cost of, of amending and fabricating the, uh, the ducts in the, under the ground. So. You say you don't have this?
No.
Okay. And then as backed up to this, you, you see, um, on 29. It's the manhole, sorry, uh, it's the manholes. Uh, look, look on page 30 and right there where it says, second paragraph, that's directed by the Engineer of Records, the type of eight-man hole structures instead of the S-123A. The contractor will be compensated for the fabrication cost of the unused S-123A as well as the new manhole structure, which is S-123B, which will be supplied and installed.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this work being done already?
Is it done? This work has not been done. It's waiting, it's pending to be moved forward.
Has it been, um, approved by FDOT?
Yes. Uh, it has been approved by FDOT. They have reviewed it. Um, they've reviewed as well as Palm Beach County, the structures, the original structure. They had to change up and refabricate the structures. So FDOT has reviewed all the plans and so forth. And they have approved it. They will be covering the cost of the $27,829.
All right, so, so it's a normal procedure for us to sign it, do the resolution and sign it and then have everybody else sign it?
Yes, ma'am. It is for, for commission to approve and give their okay that this work is being done so that FDOT can approve the costs and pay for the costs so that when reimbursement happens, commission has already approved those costs. Even though it is not coming out of our pocket, FDOT still has to know that our city commission has approved because it's attached to the contract.
So they'll pay the city and the city pays them?
They, they, so when we do the reimbursement, the money is included in the reimbursement. FDOT has covered that cost. There's no money that we have to cover.
Okay, so it hasn't been done. So they do it, then they send us the, the voucher or the change in.
They send us the invoice.
Yeah.
With the invoice, all the backup is attached. Before anything is, before anything is paid from us, that has to go to FDOT. FDOT reviews it, knowing that they've already looked over the design, looked, what is happening here every single day. FDOT, along with our contractors, our engineer record, the CEI, is in communication. So they know everything that is attached, they have already reviewed. And so it's just us bringing it forth to the commission for your approval, your blessing, so that we can turn around and make sure that payment and the, uh, adjustment of the 44 days is included in their schedule.
Okay, so, so I understand the way it works. We approve it. They get the go-ahead to start and then when they turn in the invoice, you send it to DOT?
Yes, ma'am.
But they don't get paid until we get reimbursed from DOT. Until we get paid from DOT, then.
They get their check.
The city pays them.
Yes, ma'am.
Any, any additional questions? Hearing none. You ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Uh, Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Borden?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Baugh?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Now we'll move to new business, which we have actually four items. American Rescue Plan Act, City Manager.
Ms. Val, would you be able to do the PowerPoint? Mayor, do you want me to move forward with American Rescue Act since they've already, uh, the commission conceded that they would be meeting Thursday as a group to handle the matter? Because the first item on new business is American Rescue Act. We've had a significant discussion on it, so. No, no, the, um, the. All right, so we're going to, we've had extensive, uh, conversation on American Rescue Plan Act. So I will move on to the next item, which is Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office Seventeenth Amendment. Uh, in your packet, you will see the amendment itself. And starting October 1 of, uh, 2022 through September 30th, 2022, a new contract in amount of $582,466 or at a $48,538.83 per month charge will, uh, we would start incurring. And if for any additional services, it'll be a hundred dollars per hour. And if for any additional services, it'll be a hundred dollars per hour. I am speaking with Major Coleman today. He says that the Sheriff's Department no longer provides Sergeant of Arms Services. If the city wanted to provide, like when we come in, have a screening device that takes your temperature and scans you for any metal, that if we had personnel operating it and if something went off, they would assist. So staff recommends we bring back the contract and approve it at the next commission meeting Tuesday, September twenty-seventh.
I, I didn't understand that. Can you explain that?
So in your packet, the, the amended contract, as is the Seventeenth Amendment. Page sixty-six.
What page is that?
When does the, when does the contract expire? Is the contract coming out for, for renewal?
Yeah, it's up for renewal and, and it's, it's basically increased about seventeen thousand dollars a year.
When is it coming up for renewal?
It, it's up for renewal now, and they want effective October one to go to the new rate. That is in, on, on page sixty-six, you see it, the amount in Article Six, the first line there, one. And what I asked is for consideration of any additional services and to see if there would be an amendment. So none of that happened because I spoke with Major Coleman, and he says they don't provide where they would sit, where Vice Mayor is sitting at. They would sit there, be Sergeant of Arms, and then all of us would be along the road. So he said they don't provide that service anymore, so there won't be a, a change of price. And then also, I asked about hand winding or protecting us while we in here. And they said if we bought the machine and if someone, something goes off, the Sheriff's Department would be kindly enough to investigate what made the machine go off. So there's no additional dollars to amend anything for this law enforcement service agreement. So I can bring it back. Is there anything that you would do? Ms. Bernadette, would you, we just would approve this document, the amendment?
We can bring it back with the resolution.
With the resolution? So I was just seeking your consent to bring it back after hearing all the things that I just said, that's all.
So basically, they're renewing the contract, the same services they have always provided, but add a seventeen thousand dollars a year increase.
All right, so I have consent, okay, next item, then.
I know some residents probably was anxious to kind of speak on that. At least as a coming back at our next meeting, that you can probably give some input. Normally, once we start deliberation in our commission meeting, it's hard to stop it and have interaction between the residents. So that's all the help that I have about it.
But can we ask a question on it? Are you going?
Question, ask the commission.
Yeah, for me, me personally, I'm listening to the city manager. I don't, I don't really think we need the, the one, or I don't know what the other thing was. Because I, thank God, Lieutenant Murrich and the staff, they're, they're here. They're here anyway, you know, with the services that we already pay. We know that there, that the increase, you know, goes up. You know, we know that because everything have gone up. But, but if they would provide the one and all that stuff that is different, it would be already into that, you know, that increase. But I don't think we should have to.
And that's something that could be considered with the, the ARPA committee is public safety, COVID prevention, where we have a device that tells you if you, if you're running hot, and also it can be a combo and.
Lots of concern, are we just trying to do metal detecting of firearms or weapons coming in? We gonna have law enforcement here, right? Okay, if we gonna do metal, because somebody may be a licensed carrier. But if they need to know firearms are not permitted in here. So, and I would have, we ever said that, have y'all ever heard that? So, but if we gonna put up a metal detector, then that's what you're talking about. But if we talk about health concern? Y'all are gonna wear masks. I would say one official with a mask on. So if COVID ain't on. COVID ain't on, but that's, that's your personal, that's your personal right. If you don't feel that you need to, that's on you. But if it's just taking temperatures, then it gonna really shock all the COVID. You want him to identify somebody that may have a flu. But I think a metal detector, if we have a fear of endangering our lives.
That's different.
It's different. Then just, just that.
I, I, I go back to just even the temperature, and I understand your concern. If it was an absorbent expense to the city, but if it's, can be funded, a lot of places have those now. Even most churches, when you go in, you know, you get your temperature checked. Even if you don't go to the point of putting someone out because they got a temperature, at least they know, and they can make a decision or not to voluntarily say, you know what? I got a fever or a temperature, it may cause someone else to get sick, so I'll just forego the meeting this time. So I don't think it's a major expense. Yeah, yeah.
If you don't have a medical, if you don't have a medical reason, that's infringing on people's rights.
Well, they just make combo machines now where they do multiple things.
Who's gonna monitor? That means a staff gonna have you assigned to monitor that. Unless all of department heads are mandated to be at this meeting like they used to be, and you didn't have one of them switch out and do it. They used to be at our meeting, so when you had questions like you had before, Mr. Johnson, he would be here to answer those questions.
Can we, then I say, if you're here and give a report?
We, we'll keep that all under advisement. Appreciate the suggestions. So the next is Palm Beach County Sheriff's Department Surveillance Equipment. I was looking to have a discussion on surveillance. I didn't want to give up the location aspect of it, but I wanted to get consent from the, uh, commission on that. Crime has, our crime rate has really reduced from these strategic items being placed. They, the county wants to use city property to place surveillance on a pole, and that's where, where we at. I didn't want to disclose things, but I, I wanted to get consent from you guys to move forward, to bring it back. It's not gonna cost us any money, correct, Mr. Foreman?
That's right.
I would go for help.
So may I bring it back to the next meeting? Thank you, gentlemen and ladies. And the last item on new agenda, under new business, apologize, is the lease with Everglades Preparatory Academy. They're seeking in a contract to extend their contract through April thirtieth of twenty thirty-seven, with them continuing to pay the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars per month, as on page sixty-nine. Provide a sixty forty split on the roof and A C repairs. Repair or replacement, city would be obligated to sixty percent and the academy forty percent, as on page eighty-four. Provide a fifty percent split on appliances when purchased by each. Whichever party pays, the other reimburses the other. So I wanted to see how the commission felt on that.
Well, um, everybody else's rent has gone up, so we need to discuss an increase as well.
And also, oh, I'm sorry.
We're already splitting things, and twenty-five hundred a month, I think that's something we need to talk about. We can use the percentage of inflation, if you like, but that's something we need to consider.
I agree with Commissioner Bolden. Also, on what I disagree with, with what they want is their, their contract is not up to twenty twenty-seven. So why are they trying to move it for another ten, you know, hour, and it's not even up yet? You see, they don't say it's not up until twenty twenty-seven, and they're trying to get another extension to twenty thirty-seven, you know? And, and, and I, and I can agree with Commissioner Bolden if, because if we're splitting, and we're splitting, because in their original contract, there actually is, is supposed to be, their sole responsibility is to repair. That's why they had that little rent. So, but now if they're gonna split the, the repairs, I'm thinking the rent should also be.
Not, not, not repairs, just like the roof replacement, the A C replacement, and if they do any appliances.
That's still, that's still repair.
Well, well, hold on.
Is the roof not covered under insurance?
Keep in mind, we rent this thing, once they get, once they're through with all the clearances on their end, we'll be able to go back and get our rental fees, and we're making money as well on top of that. I just want to point that out to the commission.
Yeah, that's, that's not new from what it was originally. That's not new for, we, we understand, that's what I'm saying, but still twenty-five hundred dollars. I know everybody now probably is getting, getting calls, they want people trying to buy houses. So everything now is going up skyrocket, your F and L bill, your water bill. I just think twenty-five hundred dollars, I think it'd be, I think it could be a boost in a little of the increase. You gotta realize, this is also almost like a multi-billion dollar company that's really, you know, that's renting this facility. You know, so you gotta, you gotta, they doing a, a just service for the community. Thank, we thank them for that, but we still gotta, business is business also. You know, so I think that, I think the increase in that, it could be, it could be a little increase in that. But I don't, I disagree with approving the lease to twenty thirty-seven until we, you know, we already at, at least not up to twenty twenty-seven.
Did that ask? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I was just gonna point out a couple of other things, but I'll wait till you all finish.
No, you're fine.
Okay. So the other thing, the other difference in what they gave versus what was in the original contract is it required a maintenance, repair, and service contract, agree, equipment, agreement on the equipment, and that was taken out. And so I just want you all to be aware of that because that was something that they were required to have year after year. And that's not, that's not in here. Additionally, there's some other language that was removed. As well. And that had to do with, it, it's just, I guess it's, it's a smaller thing, but they first said that in the, in the original agreement, there was language that said that they were, it was acknowledged that certain revisions or certain changes would be made. And then when they gave the revision, it was that they, they added the language "made" instead of, you know, for this, related to the substantial improvements. And then I think the vice mayor pointed out, the year that was extended from twenty twenty-seven, when it would normally end to twenty thirty-seven. And so one of the other things that the, the contract contemplated the last time it went up automatically, I don't know if they gave, they were supposed to give notice, and if they didn't give notice of it or if no notice was given, then automatically it would extend. But there was also language in there that it would contemplate a, a fee increase. So, so years ago, when this first went from twenty twenty-seven to, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, when it was at twenty seventeen, that was, to twenty, at twenty seventeen, I'm sorry, it was anticipated that there would be another fee increase, and so there was never an increase from the initial to twenty-five hundred dollars a month. So it contemplated already that there would have been, but there wasn't. So you, so there's, in other words, there's probably good reason that you, Commissioner, bringing it up because not only, you know, do we have to consider today's times, but also years ago, it was contemplated that that would have been an increase. So, you know, and then they also are supposed to pay additional, um, it's called additional rents or something like that in the contract where they actually have to pay, you have to consider the amount that you're paying, and we don't pay taxes on this, probably not, I'm, I'm assuming we don't. But any additional amounts that are unusual amounts, if it's insurance, they can pay a portion of that. They can pay a portion of all kinds of other things that I don't think, because you haven't brought it up, that they are paying right now. So, you know, the city would benefit by having some evaluation and analysis done, and then coming back with, I guess, a recommendation maybe from the manager as to what should be the, the new amount.
Well, any repairs like the roof, that will be covered under insurance. So who covers the insurance for the building? Do we not get reimbursed for the repair on the, on the, on the roof?
We've gotten dollars for when, we have insurance on the building. And historically, there's been damage from whether it's hurricane, windstorm, whatever. We've gotten checks for those things.
So is it fair to take the check and then charge them for sixty percent of the repair? Or should you, when, when you consider increasing the rent, take into consideration, you know, the insurance, a part of the insurance that you're paying for the building, and maybe take that into consideration in the rent? And also, if you put, you or they put appliances, it's not just limited to them because you say you also rent the building. So when you rent it, people have access to the appliances. So what if something happens? Are they supposed to be responsible for their part of the repairs? When, you know, you gotta be fair on both sides. You raise it to raise the rent, okay? Take into consideration all these things and just add it when you increase the rent. It's easier than keeping track. And if they were supposed to increase, I mean, that should have been our responsibility to say, to bill them, hey, starting this year, this month, your rent's going up to this much per, per your contract. Please see, attach and, and let them know that, you know, because.
We could also require insurance for the interior.
Yeah?
Yeah, I mean, you know, because I, I didn't see that provision in there.
You, you, you could, the, the other thing that you may consider doing is making sure that you have some type of an end, you know, within certain period of time. Like if it's a fifty fifty split on whoever makes the repairs first, it should be done or payment should be made within, you know, sixty days or whatever the amount of time is. But if, that would be negated if you actually had the requirement of them to have a maintenance plan like you have, like they were supposed to have in the past. Now, I don't know if anybody's keeping up with that to know whether or not they are doing that, but if.
That was in the original contract.
Yeah, but that is in the original contract. And, and if that's the case, you wouldn't have to change that at all. You just leave it as it is. So really, the only issue, because the other things that were mentioned, the only thing that's not mentioned that they have here in the paragraph has to do with roof repairs. And so if what you're saying, Mr. Lucas, is roof repairs are already contemplated by, you know, if there's a storm or something, they're already contemplated by your insurance, then, you know, there's not really a significant difference in what they're asking for other than the term. That's the biggest thing that's left. So if you, if, if roof repairs aren't really necessary to even be added in here, maybe what they're really trying to get is the extension on the term because that's the only logical thing that's really, you know, left. And so if, in other words, let me just wrap it up. If you all are in agreement that you still want the maintenance plan to be in effect, then it should just stay like it is. And then that just really leaves the term extending from, you know, what would have ended in twenty twenty-seven, which you still have, you know, five years or so on the term, to now another ten years on top of that date. You see what I mean? That, that's really, it looks like what is maybe the biggest concern because the other things.
Well, as the contract has stated about, we gave them a building in demise. So they've just recently done upgrades to the roof. They've done upgrades, so we should consider those things in this. And then if you guys talking about an increase, I guess when we do, the staff that we do a study, we determine how much more or did, did the commission have a price in mind?
Now, let me, let me just say one other thing, just to clarify. When you say we gave them a building in demise, in the initial.
Since it's in the lease.
Yeah, in the initial contract, this was years ago, but they were, they were supposed to make changes. Yeah, they were supposed to, by the contract, make changes within certain, you know, period of days after the contract was signed. So this wasn't, you know, that was like, you're talking twenty, twenty oh seven, two oh oh seven. So, I mean, you're beyond that point, you know, you're not just talking about the maintenance.
I want to just point out because it's in public, I mean.
But if I can say, that was the reason why they have the low, because nothing caught them by surprise of the, of the demise of the building. That's why the contract was made as is and that's why they was, went to the twenty-five hundred dollars and I'm not mistaken, after every five years, the commission is supposed to had a, increase their rate at a five percent or ten percent, but it wasn't done. But, but they knew the, the condition of the, of the building. They knew that, it says that in here and they still agree to what the contract had said. I know the only thing that was amended in their other contract, because it used to be, the gymnasium was also in this contract. But when the gymnasium was under, was in this, was closed, they didn't want to have anything else to do with the gym. So they came back and asked to be taken out of the contract for the gymnasium. So that's the only thing that was amended in the, in the, in your contract, if I'm not mistaken. The amended one is in the back here where you see a right cross, it was stretched cross for the gymnasium. But, but, but my, my own thing, I think we should keep the maintenance plan in the, in the contract. I think that should stay in the contract. And I think the rent should still be raised a little. I'm not saying you're gonna be a zuber now, but I, I agree, I think it should be, it's been like twenty-five hundred for, for years now.
Okay.
One thing to remember as well is that it is a school. So I guess they're trying to plan ahead. It's a big move if they don't agree with our terms. I mean, they got, well, they got buildings that they've been repairing and they got their own place and they got the money to do their own school. So, you know, but I don't know if that's what they're gonna do, not gonna do, but I'm saying, they, they, they're starting, I mean, it's twenty-two and it, and it expires when?
Twenty-seven, they wanna move to thirty-seven.
Five years.
Five years from now.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, I guess they're planning in five years, you know, we could do this. We could, we could extend this, if it's extended, it's fine. And if it's not, then we move to Plan B. That's, you know, their school, it's not like, like you could just get a U-Haul, pack your thing and move to another place. You know, they, and, and big companies like that, they, they project years ahead. So that's probably why they're, they're, you know, trying to extend this. I mean, I'm not saying one thing or the other, I'm saying that that's why.
We're gonna go ahead and wrap this up. I think the city's manager hopefully have gotten enough guidance to kind of definitely consider the increase. I would suggest, definitely suggest a modest as we go along and maybe progression, you know, between the years, slight increase on each of the, every other year, whatever the case may be. But we're gonna move on now to the mayor's report.
But, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure I'm clear. So are we bringing this back? Wants the manager make some recommendations to the next meeting? Is that what you, okay, got it, thank you.
Okay.
Now, is this an actual contract?
Yes.
It's part of the contract?
It's, it's one of the older ones and they're, they're looking to amend it. When you look back on the back pages.
So just to be clear, I'm not exactly sure what you're looking at, but the part that says, through the mayor, if I may, Mr. Mayor, the part that says Second Amendment to lease agreement, this is their suggested form and then the actual lease should be behind it. So what the, what the, what we will bring back after talking with them and the manager makes some recommendations that they agree to, hopefully, we'll bring back a different Second Amendment just consistent with some of the comments that you all have made tonight and, and the manager's recommendation for an increase.
Yes, on page eighty-four and eighty-five is what Ms. Bernadette is saying.
Thank you. Now we'll move to the, the mayor's report. I hope everybody had a safe, happy and blessed Labor Day holiday weekend. I want to thank our staff for their hard work and efforts. Labor Day is a day that we honor our American workers and give them a day off so they can rest and enjoy the fruits of their labor. Also, it was said earlier, but I just want to reemphasize it again. We have a new business relocated in Pohokee. The healthcare, Empower Women Healthcare Industry, they are health medical provider and they're located at the United Methodist Church here on Bacon Point Road. They had a grand opening, they said that was well attended. And I think they're gonna have great services for our community. They have low cost, low cost health insurance for residents and families, so that's a big, big plus. So we'd like to just welcome them to Pohokee and wish them much success in their endeavors. Also, the city of Pohokee will be hosting our annual remembrance of the storm of nineteen twenty-eight on Friday, September the sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two, from ten AM to twelve PM at the Pobeyaki Cemetery Rigs. Everyone to come out is a celebration of those who survived the hurricane and a remembrance of those who died. The majority of those who died was a migrant that came to Pohokee to work during the season and return wherever they lived that. But it was a lot of lives lost during that storm. So annually, we remember those that lost their life basically. Also, on Thursday, September the fifteenth and Friday, I'll be at a legislative conference. I'm not sure who are the other commissioners who may desire to go, but we all, I believe, serve on legislative committees. And as a mayor, I would like to make sure that at least I'm there. I know this is a conflict with the annual observance of the storm of nineteen twenty-eight, so you have a option whether or not you're gonna be attending that or not. I'm on program to bring the welcome and if the vice mayor there, hopefully she'll be able to bring it or another commissioner on my behalf will bring the welcome for that program. If you're not attending the legislative conference and if you're available to attend the storm remembrance. I clearly understand and agree that the commission as a whole is elected to make decisions for the city that's in the best interest of the city and all of its residents. However, also agree and believe that it is ultimately our responsibility as commissioners to make those decisions. However, I equally believe that we should all seek residents' input and at a bare minimum, listen to our residents because they are the one who elected us, we are the one who make the final decision. But we need to be mindful of their input and their projects and what they would like to see done. And we don't always agree, don't always have to agree. But let's make sure when we do speak with residents, that they do understand one thing, we are listening to them and respect their opinion. Because to be frankly, and I don't like to regress to the past, but for previous past year, our resident wasn't really listened to. There were a lot of things done without their input or consideration and I was prayerful and hopeful that our, at least our new commission as a whole won't make those same mistakes and not take in their consideration. Also, I had previously requested that all of our outstanding major projects, our grant-funded program be a part, a regular part of our agenda that haven't happened. So I'm gonna put it in the form of a motion that any major grants be a part of our agenda until that particular grants or those grants are cleared off the table. So if we're talking about Barfield Highway, which is a four point five million dollar grant and project, that that continue to be on our agenda till it's done. The upcoming project on McClure Road. And, and the reason I'm bringing it up because I'm fearful that some of these projects, if we're not careful and don't have the proper updates and progress, it's gonna fall between the tracks. And I think all of them, if I'm not mistaken, we have had, and not this current administration, but we've had to request an extension to those due dates. So we need to know the timeframe of the completion and the timeframe they're gonna start. So we'll be able to share that information with our residents and they'll be able to be here whether in person or by Facebook or social media to give an update and receive an update on these, these particular projects. So we know the major project, I don't have to list them all, list them all, but those major grants, let's make sure it's part of our agenda. And if I would at this time, just move that as a motion so it would be direct to staff to make sure it's included on future agenda item. And that would be my motion. If I could get a second on that, I would appreciate it.
I'll second that, pass, I will, I will say pass, I'm sorry.
So it has been moved by the mayor and properly seconded by the vice mayor that staff is authorized to put all future major funded projects on our agenda on a regular basis so we can receive updates on those progress. Call for question?
Man, I agree with that because that's one of the, they know, I call not, almost every other, well, once a week, I get out the updates on these projects. Because I'm like, I'm fearful that some of them are gonna fall through the, through the tracks and we don't need that. Especially on McClure Road and Barfield.
And my only comment is like, maybe two, three months now, I requested all this information. I don't know how it happens that everything that I go to City Hall and talk about and ask, it always, you always seem to just talk about it. You talk before anybody else, so it's like you say everything that I've gone in there and said. And, and once again, Mr. Lucas, we have a conversation, it's between you and me and it's not to be, to go out and be told to anybody.
Okay, let me.
It's, it's amazing, it's amazing that.
You're out of, you're out of order now.
No, I'm not out of order, it's my time to speak.
No, I'm doing my report and you weigh loss base, very far base.
Okay, then continue your report and I'll say it in mine.
Thank you. And let me clear something up with you very quickly that none of these items, not one, not even an amps, not even an any beanie teeny weenie amps, that I've had discussed with Mr. Lucas and he has shared some concern that you had and looked like I'm getting your thoughts and ideals. If these ideals that I'm bringing forth is similar to what you have discussed, that's great. That means we're all thinking kind on the same page.
It's been since twenty fifteen or twenty seventeen.
To be honest, I haven't really had, I have had conversations, but not close, direct conversation with Mr. Lucas the way you think it may be occurring. Matter of fact, I even go as far, and I, I kinda hate to say this, I think our relationship is probably the most distant than any of the area's mayors and their city manager, which I believe it should be a lot stronger than what it is. So, and I'm gonna say this, I believe he probably listened to you maybe even more than I.
So, yeah.
But he listened to everybody, I'll put it that way. So I'm not stealing your ideals and if some of these things are similar, that's, that's great. I mean, we're on the same page and collectively we can move forward. I mean, someone else is echoing some of the same concerns I've had with him. I've gotten Facebook posts and calls and they say, Mayor, you need to make sure such and such, the, 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 the marina grass overgrowth. I've already had that on my agenda and had already previously spoken to them about it. So even some ideals that residents share with me, they, we just thinking alike in some areas. So that's a good thing, that's a very good thing. Lastly, the last two comments I got, the cemetery. I was advised that they was giving a used lawn mower. That's a, that's a big property and they need to make sure that they have the proper equipment to make sure that cemetery is properly maintained. You're talking about some criticism that we get and I know you may don't see it all the time. I don't know if you're on Facebook, but I get the calls. I get them, I get out there and actually go out to the cemetery. And so if you gave them a used lawn mower, I don't know how many we ordered, I think it was about six. I hope that just a temporarily, well, three, yeah. Out of the property, I think they need, they, they'd have to maintain almost as much property than we do in the city. And I understand that Public Works is coming to assist them every other week or so, you know, twice a month, which is great. I certainly encourage that to continue, but, you know, they, they, some of them felt a little downhearted because here they are receiving a used lawn mower where one of the workers out there continued to repair the one they had because it breaks down all the time, you know? And I'm not saying these things are right or wrong, but it just hardened me when, when I, when I heard that. So make sure we, we do the right thing and, and assist them too. And, and the third one was the gators, we received three gators. And when I asked about where they was going, one of the comments was, well, we're gonna send one to Parks and Rec, we'll send one to Public Works and we're planning on sending one to the cemetery. They didn't get their gator and I don't think.
We haven't received the gators yet.
Haven't got them yet.
Those are their own back order, there's four of them, sir.
Okay.
We haven't received them yet.
But they will be receiving one.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and what about the?
It'll be new.
Thank you, we appreciate that and I'm certainly that staff out here appreciate that too. Okay, that'll be the end of my report. I had a few other things, but I'm not gonna belabor, it feels late and we need to kind of wrap up. Next, we'll move quickly to our city manager report.
Well, next meeting, we'll bring forward all the repairs and things being done at the Marina complex as well as the sports complex. We are scheduling a unveiling for this Friday, 4:00 PM at the sports complex for the scoreboard. Just a reminder that Storm of 1928 Memorial event is at Fort Miaka from 10:00 AM to noon. That concludes my report, sir.
Okay. Now we'll move to our city attorney report.
Yes, very briefly, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. We noticed in the last commission meeting that in terms of the order of business, there may have been, I guess, a miscommunication when we, when it was actually, I guess, stated by Mr. Lucas. And we wanted to bring it back to the next commission meeting to reflect the order that he thought was relayed to you all, which would include future agenda items. And so we will have that on the next agenda. But I just wanted to give you the preview of it so that nobody will be surprised. Thank you.
And while we're on the agenda, those particular comments, I see we have an N commissioner comments. And O for the good of the order, those need to be merged. If you're making a commission comment, share your, for the good of the order, include it in there. We're not going in two different directions. Those should be combined as one agenda item.
That's O and P, right?
Okay, now we'll move to our.
No, that's N and O.
N and O.
I got it.
Move me into our city commissioners' comments. And we're gonna start with Commissioner Perez.
Why are you gonna start with me?
No, you're saying it, you're gonna be last, I take your ideas. I just wanna make sure that.
No, it just, it just, you know, it just, it's okay. Because the bottom line is that I want the things to happen, I want the things to go forward. It really doesn't matter to me who does it first or last. My thing is that these, these grants, they all been there since Chandler was here. None or nothing has moved forward, there haven't been no activity. So now, all of a sudden, since I started, I've been putting pressure. Even when Mr. Lucas was here the last time, I was trying to get these records. I put it in for three months. I wanna give a report because some of these, some of these, this, this, this grants, either they have expired and we have extended. Some of them are coming to an expiration. In the past, they waited till it was almost expiration. And then the city manager would come in and then the commission would let the city manager go out and seek his own, you know, contractors and things to do the work, like it happened at the Marina. But my thing is, this needs to stop. If we have all these, these grants, if they already have been allocated, if they have been approved, what's the problem? We have an engineer. You get it allocated, give it to the engineer, write the RFP, put it out. Let's get the work done. These things, these things have been, you got Barfield that finally started. You got Eastlake, you got McClure Road, you have MLK Park, you have the house on the library. And every week, we hear, every, every, every commission meeting is like, we're working on it, it's getting ready to come out, but there's no activity. What is the status? I've been asking for status. I wanna know what's the status. Eastlake, I've asked, last status that we got, FTEP said, no. It has to, you have to apply again or go out for bid again or whatever the heck it was. That we're not gonna, that we're not gonna continue it. Ms. Adams keeps saying that we have it, that it's continued, that Rio Bag is coming back, that it's gonna finish. I wanna see it, I wanna see it from FTEP. Yes, we have granted you, go ahead, continue. Because guess what? If that gets done and we don't have it approved, it's coming out of the city money. And it should not happen. And you know what, if we're not responsible with the money that they give us, that we let it expire or we misallocate the money or we do the half-butt job that we did in the Marina, we're not gonna be getting any grants. So what are we gonna do in the same predicament that we are now? Another thing that I wanna touch on is, is, is the Parks and Recreation, the procedure, the interview, how, how do we come to that, to that? And I have nothing against Greg. But it seems to me that out of the people that, that, that apply, there's people that are overqualified and has got more time here and more experience and everything than, than the Mr. Williams. So how, how did that happen?
So who was interim? Mr. Williams?
It doesn't matter whether he was interim or not. You open that up for anybody to qualify. He was interim because of the way that he was placed there, which was wrongly done.
Personnel issues, I can't speak on that matter in the public.
Personnel issues, do you wanna go through, through the scoring?
Attorney.
And see who scored the most?
Are we allowed to speak on?
Well, in your charter, there are certain things that the manager is designated to have authority over. And that would be hiring and firing staff. And so that is one of the issues that it's, and I don't know exactly how it's worded in this charter, but it's normally called interference with the duties of the manager. And so you can't really tell him who to hire or fire based on the charter.
Let me ask you a question, hold on.
I was not telling him who to hire or fire.
Are you allowed to discuss any of the scoring or anything like that? That has nothing to do, I'm not, we're not telling him who to hire. It's an analysis of the thing after the fact.
Yeah, you can certainly give your comments. There's nothing that prohibits you from doing that. But in terms of giving the manager direction or, you know, you just may wanna be careful about that because that could be interpreted as interference with his, his.
Okay, so when it's my turn and it's not my turn.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I, just let me know when I should stop. Can we do that?
Okay, I'll try, yes, sir.
Thank you. You might as well take care of one and I'll go last.
Are you done?
Yeah, I just, I just, you know, I just hope that everybody's listening to the process. Because it seems to me, if you're gonna be fair, you gotta be fair all across. It should be a fair process, not only in the hiring, everything else. It cannot be the way that you want it because of personal reasons. And then, you know, it, it's not, it's not. This is not about, you know, who we like or, or who we favor. It's a process. This is a governmental agency, a branch. So we need to conduct ourselves as one.
Let me say this real quick too, I try not to interrupt and I don't as much as possible. But a lot of this really, to be honest, is our fault up here. You know, we set one standard for one individual, don't set and then request it a certain standard besides for everybody else, you know. We didn't go through an interview with Mr. Lucas. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but we didn't do it. You know, we didn't make sure that his application was updated or anything. So the area that we are responsible for, we fell short in it. Hiring and firing is his responsibility and that's not our area, but we questioned that. So it's a little strange the way we do things sometimes.
Like I said, I don't know when you didn't interview Mr. Lucas. But Mr., we interviewed Mr. Lucas and we saw his resume and we saw everything. I mean, what, what changed from when he left here, what, for two months? That's what he needed to update. Update your resume, Mr. Lucas. Wherever you went when you were gone.
Mr. Gonzalez, submission for that.
All right, appreciate it, Mayor. Thank you for bringing up the cemetery. That was one of the things I wanna talk about. You covered that much, pretty much, very good. Thank you for that. The second thing is, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. The roads on 441 and the trailer park, Los Compadres Trailer Park, who's in charge of cleaning those canals out? Because these, the canals right by 441 coming around the curb and to South Lake, they need to be cleaned. There's blocking traffic and.
Yeah, I know the vice mayor and a couple of commissioners be trying to follow up on that. I don't know if the administration staff.
I have a report on that, I have a report, in my report, but y'all go ahead and finish on that.
Okay. So DOT doesn't take care of that anymore, correct?
I'll give you my report, I have a report on it.
All right, thank you. I think that should be it.
No, go ahead.
You sure you wanna go right now?
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Okay, I'll go right now. Attorney Weeks just stopped me when he should stop me. Could you give that to John? You need to go film that, I guess? Uh, no, just, just to. I'm sure, somebody out there want this, anybody, anybody, come get it. Matter of fact, I have two, two of them, anybody, come get it. Remember Attorney Weeks stopped me when he's supposed to stop me. Okay, so getting back to what Commissioner Perez was discussing, all right. It's the job of local government to do the right thing and get people in the local community to trust local government. That's our job. And the only way they're gonna trust local government is if we do the right thing. And you're right, across the board, that's the only way they're gonna trust local government, okay? I don't have anything against Greg. I can mention names, right? I don't have anything against Greg, all right? But I will say, what I've been getting, the calls that I've been getting, the people who've been reaching out to me, they are deeply concerned about our hiring processes, all right? Now, it's one thing for a person to not be qualified, I get it. It's another thing for, for qualified people and how we deal with that. Okay, so what I did was, I got the raw scores from the interviews. And quite frankly, that's all I needed, okay? Am I good so far?
You're making me a little nervous, but.
All right, so you'll stop, all right? Okay, so I have four candidates here. I'm just, this is just a data analysis, that's all, okay? Is that cool? Okay, you have four candidates here. Can I call their names?
I would do that.
Okay, A, B, C, and D, okay? So I'm looking at these scores and immediately I notice something, okay? I'm looking at a 77, a 79, and a 66, okay? If you go down to C1, you'll see a comparison of the first two. You know who, you see who those are, right? Okay. Person A, fine, two-point difference. Person B, one-point difference, fine. Person C, 16-point difference. Person D, five-point difference. You go to C2, you see who that is. Person A, 15-point difference, B, one. C, 14-point difference. D, 30-point difference. You go to C3, 17-point difference, zero-point difference, two-point difference, and 25-point difference. Now, I'm a teacher. And I hope that some of our high school students are watching because this is Statistics 101. And what I love about statistics is, if you know what you're doing, you know how to find what you need to find and numbers really don't lie, okay? Now, let's move on to Section D real quick. It says, "Sometimes data for a variable will include one or more values that appear unusually large or small and out of place when compared to other data values." Which is what we're seeing here, all right? "These values are known as outliers and often have been erroneously included in the data set." That means error took place, okay? "Steps should be taken to identify the outliers and each one should be reviewed carefully for accuracy." "Steps should also be taken to review the appropriateness of its inclusion in the data set." "Note, this means that the same value may not be considered an outlier if it occurred on a different context." For example, if one of the interviewers had a score that was completely way off from the others, it would only be necessary, it would only be good if they were being judged on something different. But if they're all being judged on the same thing, same questions, same time, all right? And you have an extreme score, it is considered an outlier, okay? All right, moving on. "If an error has been made, corrective action such as rejecting the data value in question can be taken." "The mean and standard deviation are used to identify outliers." And that's exactly what I did. Are we good so far? So if you look at E, I divide it by three, that's the three scores, and I got the mean. For person A, it's 87.6. For person B, it's 88.8. For person C, it's 88, 89, I mean, and for person D, it's 84.3. All right, let's move. Let's look at G. So now, to get the, to get what we need, we need to do something called a Z-score, which is gonna help us find out what the standard deviation away from the mean is. Now let's talk. The Z-score is given, right here, you see the formula for it, correct? The Z-score represents the relative position of the data value by indicating the number of standard deviations from the mean. We already got the mean, right? Okay, thank you. The rule of thumb is that any value with a Z-score less than negative three or greater than three or greater than the plus three should be considered an outlier. And outliers should be eliminated from each data set. So I took the liberty of doing it myself, I don't have an SPSH software, but I didn't need it, okay? Let's look at H, you see the formula there, correct? All right, so what's it, where it says from A1, A2, A3, that's the same data you saw in the beginning, right? Remember, circle that 77, that 79, and that 66, these are raw scores. I got the means from F1 and I got the rounded mean, which I really didn't need from F2. Now let's move on to I. You see twos across the board, right? The two represents the standard deviation from the mean. And the reason I use it is because in any distribution, 95% of the values will be within two standard deviations of the mean. I'm getting somewhere with this, y'all. Moving down, where it says outliers and standard deviations away from the mean without correction. So without taking out any outliers, this is what we have. And, and if you go down to J, and you'll see across the board, for person A, you have a 2.2. That's a good score because it's not above three or it's not less than negative three, all right? It's a good score. If you move over to person B, 0.4 or negative 0.4 is even better, to be honest with you. Good score. Now, person C, that's 79, that's a negative five. That goes beyond the negative three, which means that that is an outlier and that score should be taken off. Person D, that 96, the Z-score was a 5.85, which is beyond three, isn't it? That is an outlier and that should be taken off. Outliers represent some form of bias and external influence on a decision. Let's be real. Am I good so far? Am I good so far?
You're good.
Okay. Go down to K. For Person A, we have a three-point-two. Almost made it, right? But it's above three, isn't it? So I'm gonna take it off, because it is an outlier. Even though it's a positive one, it's still one nonetheless, correct? Okay. Person B, zero-point-one, got it? Person C, three, right on the money, good. Person D, three-point-three-five, outlier, take it off. Let's go down to L. Person one, Person A, seventy-seven, that's a negative five-point-three, all right? That needs to be taken out, because that is beyond negative three, all right? That is an outlier. Eighty-nine, zero-point-one, perfect score. Ninety-three for Person C, that's a two, it's a good score. Sixty-six, look at sixty-six. On the Person D, you have a Z-score of negative nine-point-one-five, which is a huge negative bias, all right? So we gotta take that score out, right? Okay. Let's move on. Now, outliers and standard deviations away from the mean with, um, one of the interviewers, you know, you, you can see. Okay, so we're in M right now, right? Now, if you look down to O, you'll see where it says NA, that's where I took it out, correct? Right? Okay, so, you got the two-point-two, we're going across M now, zero-point-four, and then you got another NA, 'cause that was an outlier, right? And then you have another outlier in Person D, right? So we take that out. Now, what I did was, I focused on the person who, the person's scores for this one, you see the name, okay? A lot of outliers, scores that need to be taken out. So now, because those scores were taken out, I had to divide differently to get their means, right? So if you look at Q, you'll see, for Person A, I had to divide by two, because one score was eliminated. You had three scores, now you have two, right? If you go across, you'll see divided by three. Perfect, nothing wrong with it, no outliers. If you look at Person Number, Person C, divided by two, Person D, divided by two. Now, you have their new mean scores. Person A, ninety-three, Person B, eighty-eight point six, Person C, ninety-four, Person D, ninety-three point five, right? But there are more outliers, right? There's a total of six. So we had to take all six of them out, correct? Well, five, and I'll tell you why, okay? Now, this is with all of the interviewers, all of them, and the outliers from all of them. And I'm gonna tell you why I can only do five. Okay, so now, all the NAs that you see, all of those NAs are outliers, and they come out. Now, what we get when we go, when we go down to W, if you look at the first person, now I can only divide by one, because there are two outliers, right? You see that? Okay, Person B, absolutely no outliers, perfect. Person C, two scores. Person D, watch this. Now, if you, do you see the asterisk next to that? If you go and look at T, and you look at Person D, you'll see the asterisk. Let me tell you what that indicates. It says, "This is also an outlier, however, it is the only surviving score left for Person D that is close to being within the deviation of plus three." It's the only one, oth- otherwise, this person would have no score, okay? So I had to keep something, the closest thing to three, to positive three, correct? Okay, let's move on. Now, y'all are done, right? I didn't have a chance to, uh, copy this last sheet, but I'm gonna explain it to you. Okay, so after taking out all of the outliers, which is five, right? It's supposed to be six, but I had to keep one, because otherwise that person would have had no score, okay? Then I ranked them all, based on data that was given to me. Let me tell you what I came up with. Person, the first per, first place was E. Second place was S. Third place was R. Fourth place was G. And then, let me tell you what I did after that, because I was curious as to what the person who is no longer here with us scored. Because I thought that that would probably be the one that we will, we would have to look at, because probably not influenced by anybody or anything, probably gonna be completely objective, and I, my assumptions were correct. Did you just hear what I said for, when I took all of the outliers out, when I got the rankings? That same person had the exact same ranking. When I went back and looked at their original scores, had the exact same ranking. Now, numbers tell a story, okay? The other two interviewers, uh, nowhere near it, really. But that first person that I'm mentioning right now, had the exact same ranking that I came up when I took all of the outliers out of the datasets. Now, let's take a look at, and I'll be dumping this, dumping this quick. Let's take a look at Person, if you go back up to A, the A section, and you look at Person Number Three. The Person, no, Person Two, B. What you'll find is, because the scores were so close, that's an indicator that you know, and you did it right, with this one. How is it that the other three did not get that close of a, 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 a dataset? So, in essence, you're saying, it, what, what the numbers are saying is, you know what you're doing. You just didn't do it with the other three. That's what the numbers say, okay? So now, um, that's gonna raise up a lot of questions. We have to do things the right way, and I'm gonna tell you, by the looks of this, some people should not be interviewing anybody. Because when you start getting a negative nine-point-one-five away from the mean score of three people, that is extreme, it's excessive. That's excessive. So now, I have a lot of questions, and I might not get to a, to ask those questions tonight, but I'm gonna tell you, going back and looking at this, I was infuriated by it. Because I, listen, my thing is this. We need to earn the trust of our people, and the only way we're gonna earn the trust of our people if we do things right. I don't mind losing a fight if it was a fair one. I could take a loss if it was a fair one, but if you were on steroids, I can't accept that. So we're gonna have to figure out a way, because if it wasn't for the fact that it's already late, I, I would have a series of questions to ask right now, and I think these questions would be some very powerful and tough ones to ask.
Go for it.
Not, not at this time.
We got time.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
We're, we're not on per se, direct city business where we have to have a vote, that's the reason I'm questioning that. Our real standard is nine o'clock, we wanna give him the opportunity to get his information out as fair as, as possible, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna go through that other process.
And Mr. Mayor, can I just, um, add that Commissioner is basically stating his, uh, opinions about the process, as opposed to making direction to the city manager as to what he should do, or change, or anything like that, and I just want you to verify that, if you would, Commissioner?
Yes, it's just an analysis of the data that I was given, in terms of the raw scores from the interview. I wanted to identify the outliers, and, um, explain to people that when you do things like this, you, we have to do our due diligence, and when we don't, um, it creates problems. People have been calling me and asking me to look into it, so I decided to look into it. And, uh, I might as well take advantage, I might as well use this expensive education I was given, uh, as, as a way of, of pointing these things out. Uh, there were a lot of erroneous, six erroneous scores, and, and fi, and one I actually had to keep. And I think that, um, we will do a better job, um, we will, um, get things together, whether we have to forge it or find it. And I mean that. I'm done for tonight.
I have a report on that from South Lake, all of the, the, uh, where I've been in contact with, I think, um, Melissa McKinley, I thank her for her help, all what she have done to help pinpoint, um, the, the right persons, 'cause there's a lot of people passing the buck on who that property belonged to, whose responsibility is to get it cut, but I have been in, uh, communication with, uh, the Deputy County Engineer, uh, Mrs. Keller, also, uh, matter of fact, I got a, uh, meeting with Ivy on the fourteenth at the property, and also, uh, but they are looking into it now, you know, they're doing that four-point-five million dollar project on that highway with FDOT. So, but after that stuff, and even in between of that, with them, um, doing the new roads and the new sidewalks, they will, they're supposed to start next week, and getting some of the mauing railroad track was, starting there. That's what I'm looking back into, putting it off the road, bus stop there, once all of this, the road construction is done. But they are on top of it now, uh, uh, the Deputy County Engineer, they will be out here on the fourteenth. I'm gonna meet them at their site, and show them all of the stuff that needs to be cut down. But they are gonna put start mauing, starting next week, some of the overgrown vegetation in those canals. So that's just a little of some of the, it's gonna come from the county, the county is working along with FDOT. Yeah, county along with FDOT is gonna start doing it.
So who's the actual owner of the property, though? The county, the state, who, who, who?
Well, the actual thing is, there is a, depending on the project right now, it's really FDOT, 'cause that's FDOT Road, so it's really FDOT, but you know, behind there, you have some people growing, uh, cane, I think there's a cane grower behind there also, so he took some responsibility, you know, so it's a whole lot of people on it, but then you have South Beach, who owns the, the river, the canal, the canal bank, so all of the passing bucks on how to get it cut down. But they are working on getting all of that shrubbery cut down.
Right, 'cause that's the same problem I had, they're pointing fingers at each other. So that canal that's behind Duncan Page, between Shy Island and Duncan Page, um, trailer park? That canal needs to be cleaned out too, and I don't know if that belongs to-
They come on the fourteenth, I'm gonna be, I'm out there, so.
I would appreciate that.
That concludes your report, uh, Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment at the meeting.
So move.
Been moved by Vice Mayor, second by Gonzalez. Any questions? All in favor, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Marvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Golda?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Bass?
Yes. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.